All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Next up is our student, Rep. Paul Martins, who I don't think is here. Alright, if he comes and has something to add, we'll put him in. Okay, first on the agenda for audiences is public comment. Does anyone have anything from the public that they wish to comment on?
Okay.
Um, alright, I assume all of you are here to talk about our MCAS scores? Right. Okay, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have Mr. DeFranco come up and we're gonna talk about, the athletic budget. Do you want, is Peter or Brian coming up with you, or are you just solo?
Brian, why don't you come up too, just in case there's any questions for you?
Um.
Thanks.
So, the way this, this is gonna work is, we're gonna have a discussion and then if you wanna, if any members of the public wanna speak, you can speak and we just have a time limit of three minutes. That's just the way that we have it. But, what I wanna do is just, just so that everyone's clear on why we're talking about this tonight, the reason why it's on the agenda is because we had a meeting this summer and our task was to really talk about the athletic budget and how we're gonna balance it. Because right now, it's not balanced within our consolidated budget. Um, so, Mr. DeFranco's here as a result of the discussion we had at a meeting this summer and there were only three members present. So, what we talked about was how are we gonna balance this and what are the things that we can look at to balance the budget? Um, and really, he's only here tonight to provide an update of how we're gonna balance it. It's not to restore funding, because we know where the number is. We have, we do have a set number for that. So, during that meeting that we had, we discussed how we're gonna balance the budget. And at the end, when Joan and Chris were here, we talked about re-looking at the budget for potential savings. Just going line by line, sport by sport, and saying, "How can we save money?" And unfortunately, at this point, they haven't identified any savings, which is what was outlined in your orange notes. And so, the recommendation was to eliminate middle school basketball, boys and girls. Okay, and noting that field hockey has already been eliminated. Um, there's a few things that we have to consider when we think about eliminating it. Um, and these are just things that I thought of as I was going through my notes. Um, we can make middle school basketball self-funding, which means take the total cost, divide it by participants, and that's the cost. That has its own set of pitfalls, because no other sport is forced to do that. We can look at, the other option is to consider cutting freshman basketball. And the reason why I say that is, when I look at the levels that we have, we have three levels of basketball at the high school and one at the middle school. So, would it be advantageous to have two levels at the high school and one at the middle school, kinda distributing our funding? And I think that has a bigger savings than eliminating the middle school. But that's something that I would, I would push back to you.
Would it be true, Chris?
It's close.
I would push back to you, because as a board, we have to remember, we're policy-setting, they're doing the recommendations and they're doing the operations part of it. Um, the other issue that we can consider is identifying a funding source for the shortfall that we have. Right now, it looks like it's totally between ten and twelve thousand dollars. When you take out the thirty-three thousand that we haven't allocated yet to choice. I noted in your numbers, you have the sixty-five thousand, which we have in our budget, but we haven't added the thirty-three from choice yet. So, if I take that thirty-three away from either the forty-five or the forty-three, I'm at ten or twelve. But we need to think about that carefully for a couple reasons. One, we just asked the town for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar warrant article on Monday to fund extraordinary special ed costs. So, we need to, we really need to just be able to balance this. Secondly, athletics as a whole, the whole picture, isn't sustainable the way that we're running it right now. Our, our costs continue to increase every year and our users are going down. And what was really interesting is last year, when we cut the user fees, the participation level went down. I don't know what to say about that and I don't know why. But, it's something that we have to be mindful as a committee. So, to keep throwing money at it to fund the deficits is something we really need to think about and see if that's the way we wanna go. Um, a few issues that I think everyone needs to just get a little education on, athletic user fees that we have right now don't cover under a hundred percent of each sport. In fact, I think there are only one or two sports that it actually covers the cost for. So, within our budget, we have about a hundred thousand dollars that we fund athletics with. Sixty-five off the regular budget, thirty-three off of choice. The other thing that's interesting that I've seen throw out, thrown out there is co-op programs. Co-op prob, programs have not been cut for funding, has nothing to do with funding. It has to do with the town or the school that originates the sport can initiate a co-op funding to get the numbers up, but they can't use it as a funding or cost-sharing mechanism. So, those co-ops that have gone unfortunately, has to do with the numbers are reached in their host town. Um, and finally, the other issue that we have to think about is, we did have an override last, a year and a half ago, of one-point-two million, which allowed us to reduce athletic fees. But the primary reason for the override was not to fund athletics. It was to really maintain a balance within our schools that will provide the best education that we can for our fifteen-hundred-sixty-three students that we have. So, that's, um, it's important just to, for everyone to understand that we're here to talk about their recommendation and then it's up to us, you know, from there to decide what to do. But, it's not to say whether, you know, their recommendation is good or bad. It's, that's their job. That's why we have them. So, with that said...
Alright, so, I think it should be noted that we did have two budget choices that were presented to the school committee. One did have the middle school program in it, the other did not. So, to sustain the middle school, uh, boys and girls basketball programs, we would've had to raise user fees to three-hundred-and-fifty dollars across the board, which was not palatable. So, it was not done. The other thing that I don't think people realize necessarily is that if we keep the middle school program, it will probably kill our freshman teams, um, because of the MIA rule that middle schoolers cannot play on a high school team if there's a middle school option. So, um, most of our sports, soccer, lacrosse, uh, we have middle schoolers play on the lowest level, so freshman or JV, because we don't have a middle school option. Um, with, in this-
But we're not good at following that rule.
Well, we, we are now.
But the past two years, we have.
No, we really haven't.
Alright.
So, that is something that came to my attention and I've gone to, it's called the District A Committee and they approved our middle school waiver for the kids to play, um, high school basketball, or freshman basketball, I should say, only if we don't have a middle school team. So, our freshman girls' basketball team last year was all eighth graders, so that team would not have existed. Um, our boys' team was eleven ninth graders and four eighth graders, so there would've been only eleven kids on the team. Um, and year to year, I coached freshman basketball for six years. I had some teams that were majority eighth grader, so it wouldn't have run, um, under the current rule.
So, if you, but if you flip it around, if you flip that logic around, could you just, and this is just the way that I'm thinking about it, you have a JV and a varsity at the high school level. Could you just keep your middle school program going?
And, you know, the other thing to think about is those eighth graders who have been playing freshman, they're coming back down to the middle school team. So, the seventh graders and sixth graders may not actually get an opportunity to play.
Right.
So, that's something else to think about.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing is the way the league is aligned. Uh, the K-PAN League, uh, most teams, every team has a varsity basketball team. Almost every team has a JV team and a freshman team. Only three other teams have middle school teams. So, Ipswich, Manchester Essex, and Rockport. So, our schedule right now, if we are to play, has ten games. Uh, four are against Manchester Essex, three are against Rockport, and three are against Ipswich. So, there's not a lot of variety, um, in who you're playing. Where if you play a freshman schedule, you're playing ten or eleven other teams. Along those lines, I've talked to both varsity coaches, Mike Krwinski and David Tucker, and they are both in favor of having, if they had to choose between the two, because obviously, we don't wanna cut middle school basketball. But if they had to choose between the two, they'd much rather have the freshman program.
And why is that when you have so many eighth graders making it up?
I think it speeds their development, to be honest. Um, it makes them more ready for the high school game and the competition's better. They're playing against freshmen versus playing against middle schoolers.
Okay. Anything else?
How, how does, if we were fortunate to get a new school and sixth grade moves out, does that affect, would that affect at all?
I'd have to look into it.
If there was no more of a sixth grade?
A traditio, a traditional middle school in our league is six, seven, eight. I don't know of any seven-eights.
I don't either. And, and when you look at the middle school makeup of the teams, Chris, is it primary, I mean, eighth grader, some eighth graders move up. I understand that.
But they can't.
But, but let's assume they couldn't. So, would you, would the team, would sixth graders really even have a shot or a choice?
It would be the best fifteen kids. So, if there's a sixth grader who's-
So, it's fifteen kids out of how many students in the middle school?
Four hundred and...
I mean, obviously, not everybody's a basketball player, but... See, that's been one of the challenges when we figure out this sports by, the cost by sport. Basketball is the most expensive sport to run. It's just because it's small rosters, lots of games. And in terms of the middle school, the students aren't going places that are close. So, Manchester Essex, um-
Rockport.
Rockport and Hamilton.
Ipswich, which is close.
Ipswich is a little closer.
Yeah, yeah.
So-
But it's Manchester Essex and Rockport.
Yeah.
Two-thirds year games.
Right.
So, so, we have a freshman basketball team now, right?
We do.
And, and what is the, how many kids are on it?
Uh, the boys last year had fifteen, the girls had, I think it's eleven, I don't have it in front of me. But the, of those eleven were all eighth graders.
Right.
All eighth graders. And last year, how many kids were on the boys bas, uh, middle school basketball team?
There were eighteen on the boys and seventeen, I'm sorry, seventeen on the boys and eighteen on the girls. So, they, basically, they decided-
We got over thirty kids between the two teams that were playing or... And if we just had a freshman team, you couldn't get that many kids playing. If we, I mean, if we didn't have a middle school team, so that the middle school kids could try out for the freshman- It'd be the same, it'd be the same in terms of fifteen kids on the freshman-
Middle school roster size would be the same.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, seventeen and eighteen is very abnormal. Um, we didn't wanna cut, like-
Right, cut one or two kids.
Right, but if you eliminated the middle school program, then you'd only have the freshmen, for the freshmen to try out, I mean, for the middle school kids to try out for. That's what they would do. That would all, that they would have available to them would be to try out for the freshmen.
But it would, Pam, it would-
You'd still keep fifteen kids on that bench.
It'd only be eighth graders.
It'd only be eighth graders, okay. So, the sixth and seventh would have-
Not, not for a high school team or for a middle school team.
They'd have travel and GAA.
Exactly.
It's the seventh graders that get the squeeze.
Yeah. But, but there's, I just, I just need a little clarification on this. And maybe Peter, maybe you could help, 'cause you've got history here. So, I'm not doubting you, Chris, but I'm, I'm, I'm curious about this, um, eighth grade situation. Because how I recall it, when we've, and I talked to Guy about this today, so I thought he explained to me the way I understood it. So, I'm just gonna try and then you can tell me where I'm wrong, if I'm wrong. That, when we went to two principals, so, so let's, when we were one principal, two assistants, then, just like Rockport, kids in the seventh, eighth grade could play on any of our teams, including our high school teams, right? So, when we went to the, to the two principal model, we knew that that was gonna be different, that was going to change. But at the same time, we had been re, kinda revamping our handbook and said, "High school sports are for high school kids." But, if there are, just like every other team in the league, that can't fund, uh, can't fill all their rosters for high school, they, eighth graders could be, can be invited.
As long as they didn't have a middle school option, which I think is, I think that's what we missed.
What I'm questioning on that, I, I think what I'm, yeah, that, that's important. But I think what I was questioning is, like, today I was with some superintendents and one of the guys was Winthrop Superintendent. And I asked them at the table, does, do you have fresh, do you have, um, uh, do you have middle school programs? And most of them at the table said they did. And I said, "Do your eighth graders play varsity?" And they said they do, play high school, and they said they do. So, I, I, I'm not, I'm not doubting you, but when I asked Guy today, Guy said, "That's why we do the eighth grade waiver." And when he used to go and get, get the eighth grade waiver, it was so middle school kids could play, eighth graders could play. Now, I didn't think we were violating the MIA rule, but if we are, then we obviously can't.
We were, I should say we were.
Okay.
We're not anymore.
Okay, alright. Okay, so you're like crystal clear, a hundred percent?
Absolutely.
What if there aren't, what if there aren't enough high schoolers to fill the junior varsity team?
The junior varsity team?
Well, that's not usually promised, the freshmen.
So, what would happen, what's gonna happen?
If there weren't enough high schoolers to fill the freshman team?
Then you could put eighth graders on it and let, is-
Even if we have a middle school program?
No.
No.
So, that's the piece that-
So, we could not have a girls' freshman team this year?
There will be, there will be no freshman girls' basketball if we have middle school girls' basketball.
Unless ninth graders.
But you don't have them. You just-
If they're ninth graders.
I guess the way you look at it, though, is you have to fill the demand. I mean, the kids in middle school, we, we have had an, a huge amount of people that are interested in the sport. My concern is if you get rid of the sport, it's never gonna come back. I mean, let's be realistic, it, it won't come back.
No, that's true.
How can you say to so many kids that you're not gonna offer it? I guess it's just, for me, and full disclosure, I have two middle schoolers. I just think that if we get rid of it, it's just sending the wrong message. I really do. And I, I just think too, like, when we say, like, in the last meeting, we were saying, "Well, why should these parents fund the sport?" Well, you know what, we have to, like, give the parents an opportunity to say whether they wanna do that. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of a hundred percent, you know? But, when we cut field hockey, we really didn't even ask the incoming sixth graders if they were interested. We could've had a team.
Oh, I don't know.
We don't know, though.
I don't know.
But we, but we figured, okay, last year we didn't, so let's just assume that we don't this year. And I think that assumption was wrong.
But, but it's, it's, but, you, you can't eliminate the fact that there's X amount of dollars. I think that, I mean, you know, listen, I wanna, I wanna make it crystal clear to everybody in the audience on television. We, if it were up to me, no one would pay a dime to play sports. No one would pay a dime. It should be part of a child's education and there's no doubt in my mind about that. I benefited, when I went to school, I was a three-sport athlete. I had three brothers and sisters who all played three sports and we didn't pay a dime. So, that is what we all hope for. Unfortunately, we don't live in those times. And when Chris came, Chris didn't, remember, Chris did not come and say, "Let's cut middle school basketball." His recommendation was option A, which was to increase the user fees across the board. The committee's discussion, if we remember, was, and he said it right, it was not palatable to have everybody's fees after the override where we brought the fees down to go back up to that level. So-
In hopes that we would find money.
Either, and, and he was asked to go back and he and Joan went back. And the, the truth of the matter, when you look at the budget, is the money is in salary, coaches' salaries, game officials, and transportation. We don't even buy, we don't even buy uniforms out of our school budget for our teams. We don't buy the basic of supplies. Where our parents support that through fundraisers. So, it, it, you know, it, it isn't, you know, we're here to talk about something very unpleasant. And so, it's really, the math, as I said to Ann today, the mathematical formula's easy. If the budget doesn't go up and the user fees don't go up, the expenses go up, we aren't gonna be able to afford the program. We can't sustain the program. So, the thinking was not to put the poor middle school schoolers off. There was discussion about what other options might there be? So, now, if there's gym time that's freed up from not having the middle school program necessarily, could there be something organized for middle schools that was really a strong club team, inter murals kinda, kinda concept where everybody got to play? And everybody got to play and it cost a whole lot less money. You, you know, you don't need the, all of the, you don't need the travel costs, you don't need necessarily all the transportation. It wasn't that there wa, wasn't gonna be some kind of an option explored, because we do know there's a need. We do know that the kids after school should be busy, need to be busy. Many of the kids, however, do have an option in middle school. And I'm not, I'm just giving you all the, all the arguments, I'm not selling it, I'm not telling you I like any of it. But, high school kids, by the time they get there, unless they're really the best of the best, don't really have another in-town option to, to play. Whereas at the middle school level, we have, GAA's got a fabulous opportunity and then there's, I don't know, all AAU and all those other things that are available, that parents take advantage of. So, they have the op, kids have the opportunity to engage at the competitive level outside of school. And if we could provide an in-school option that more kids could participate in for less cost, that was, that was thrown on the table, not, not at the exclusion of no other option.
Right, but you might not have the same competition. You wouldn't be traveling to play other, and, I mean, I was asking about the roster size just in support of what Barb is saying, that it is a very popular sport. There's a great deal of interest in this, in this town. And a lot of kids that really count on being able to be in middle school basketball. And in full disclosure, I have two sons who have not told me yet. I, I have no plans to sign them up for middle school basketball, so I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just thinking about all of our, all of our students.
Right, so the reason the committee's talking about it is that you have the control over the money. Basically, that's, that's it. Operations-wise, the recommendation is that the, the program, as unpleasant as we feel it is and is that the middle school program, if we're forced to live within the budget we have, that, that's the only option unless you choose to increase the user fees. That's an option you have. Or we identify ten to twelve thousand dollars somewhere in the budget. And, you know, if, if you wanna go in that direction, my recommendation, in talking to Joan about this today, is that you really, without taking money away from something else where the money's already earmarked, which is, I don't think the, the road you wanna start going down, okay? Is transportation, because we have, we have some money left in transportation with the change in the, um, the change in the transportation company. But just remember, we've already bailed athletics out by fourteen thousand dollars with that money because they couldn't meet the budget. So, so, so just understand that, that this, this just goes the wrong direction, okay? As far as the money goes. So, we do, in calculating what we talked about today, you would have ten thousand dollars left in that transportation line right now. However, remember with the triple E, we're busing kids to practices, so we don't cancel our sports program. We're busing kids to tri, to Haverhill. Do you know, Chris, what that's likely, hopefully, there's a killing frost next week and we don't have to worry about this anymore. But, until we get that, we have to come up with Plan B. So, do we have any idea what that total cost might be?
Well, our average bus cost is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a bus.
A day?
A day.
And how many buses?
It depends on the day. So, today, we sent two buses to Haverhill, so that's five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we're also playing all of our home games on the road, which is another two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
So, clue, this isn't going the way that-
No.
Okay, so, so maybe that's not an option you have. So, let me consider something else. You know, again, I don't think you have really any wiggle room within the budget, but the other option you always have is you can go to school choice. Again, we don't like that one-time expenses or what we're trying to do out of school choice.
Not sustainable.
But you, but you do have, if you're, if you're looking at it for this year, while you reevaluate the, the whole plan going forward for the sustainability factor, you could potentially, um, go there. And, uh, you, you already paid thirty-three thousand out of school choice. I think we figured that the, that you would have a balance at the end of the year, after all the things you're obligated for, given the number of students. Remember, we haven't been filling those slots. We haven't been replacing seniors that have graduated, although we did add kindergarten and first grade this year. We figure you're gonna have somewhere between fifty and eighty thousand dollars at the end of the year. So, if you took ten to twelve, that would just be an expense you would charge against that.
But we've, we've gone through, I'm gonna guess, five thousand in transportation.
Easily.
For triple E. And I'm just thinking ten days at about five hundred bucks each. And we haven't had a frost yet.
No.
And we don't know when it's coming.
No.
First week in October, they say.
Um-
Really? I hope they're right.
Wow. Alright, Rob, I'm sorry, you had something?
No, um, so either, you know, on the A or Z and going back to the, to, to, in the middle, is there, is there a partnership that could be developed with the district and then the outside sources that have programs in place that would somehow, uh, make it easier, more, more conducive to, uh, these, these young kids playing outside?
Well, I, I think Chris was talking about maybe offering GAA some of the, some of that gym time to maybe see if they, if they could bring some of their travel program down to the afternoon slots. I don't know if that's helpful. I, I'm not, are you talking about like, out, like, like GAA's in every town?
Yeah, exactly.
We have, we have a travel program.
They have a travel. Russ, can you just, can you speak, there, there is a travel program for GAA, right? How does that work?
It's fifth through eighth grade.
It's fifth through eighth grade, based on the limited gym time available within Georgetown. A travel team practices one hour a week.
Okay.
At Brook School and plays their games on Saturdays or Sundays at the Georgetown Middle High School. So, generally, they have one, one practice for an hour and one to one and a half games per weekend, 'cause they may have a road game on Saturday and a home game on Sunday.
So, if, I'm just wondering, if there was gym, more gym time available, if the middle school program didn't exist, does that, is that possible to, uh, like, enhance your pro-
There may be something that GAA could do with the additional gym time.
Yeah.
It would be a little more difficult because-
Of the time?
My recollection is-
People aren't even-
Middle school practice times were two-thirty to three-thirty or three-thirty to four-thirty.
It's two-thirty, three-thirty, three-thirty to four-thirty, in the small gym, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be creative here, you know?
We could trade that time, we could make that work if, if that's an option.
Rob referred to the word partnership. I have to say at this point that I thought we had a partnership.
Oh, we do.
And I was very disappointed that I was at a G-A, GAA basketball preseason meeting last night and somebody told me, "Oh, did you hear the rumor that they're gonna eliminate middle school basketball?" I'm really disappointed that GAA wasn't approached about this and, you know, I heard about it at some bar last night.
Yeah, I can certainly see why that's disappointing. I didn't know that hap-
That's not much of a partnership.
I, I didn't know that happened, Russ, you know, I, I will apologize for that, because we do have a partnership and that, that, I can understand why you'd be frustrated by that.
But it is, with, with that being said, um, and I'm sorry you heard about it that way too.
Yeah.
But right now, at this moment, um, is there room, does, does, as an idea, does it, does it sound like there's an opportunity there to develop something a little bit more intense? Would it, would it?
Rob, what, what, give me a little, I'm, I'm not really following what you're saying.
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking right now, so, so they, they practice one night a week and then they have a game, one game a week, typically. And what if that-
So, so, Chris, right now, do the boys' middle school team get an hour in the small gym and then the girls get an hour in the small gym?
That's how it works.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's two additional hours available, but now you're talking about-
Every day, though, right, Russ?
Every day.
Yeah.
But now you're talking about potentially eight teams, boys and girls, fifth through eighth grade. And if there were no middle school teams, do we have eight teams? Or now, all of a sudden, we're gonna balloon to ten teams within GAA because there is no school option?
I don't know.
Those are all things that would have to be considered. Okay, now those ten teams have to be squeezed into two hours worth of time. And, but, but while I'm talking, I'm just gonna run with it right here. From the way I look at it, financially, developmentally, and competitively, if something has to be cut, it's the freshman program that should be cut, okay? Financially, you're gonna save close to twice as much money, certainly more money. Developmentally, I'm afraid, you take out the middle school program in any sport that any kid plays, the more touches on the ball, the better they're gonna get, okay? So, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders now have the opportunity in middle school to practice an hour every day for three months. Somewhere around fifty hours, these kids are touching the ball. But if you wipe out that middle school program for three years, potentially for three years, those kids are gonna lose out on those fifty hours. Competitively, you wipe out the freshman program, you now have a JV and a varsity program. You got fifteen kids for JV, twelve kids for the varsity teams, probable roster sizes. You have the forty-five kids that want, that are eligible to play high school basketball, freshmen through seniors. They come to tryouts for the week and the twenty-seven best kids make the team. I don't care what grade they're in anymore. I don't care if Jimmy, the eleventh grader, you know, isn't as good as Ryan, the ninth grader. You take the twenty-seven best kids, now your teams are more competitive. Your, your feeder program, your middle school program and GAA, the kids are getting more development and you're saving more money. To me, it's, it's a no-brainer that if something has to be cut, it's the freshman team. The competitive nature of basketball, our, our middle school teams are getting, on the boys' side, are getting croaked, because you're taking the best, last year, they took the best four eighth graders and put them on the freshman team. So, the middle school team was at a complete handicap. And the freshman team didn't have any more success. So the middle school team was at a complete handicap, and the freshman team didn't have any more success than the middle school team, because those four good eighth graders are now playing a year above their abilities.
But to be fair, you're just talking about the boys' side. On the girl's side, our eighth grade te- eighth grade team, our freshman team made of eighth graders was dominant.
And the girls' middle school team is not.
Right, see, guys, guys, hold on, hold on, guys. One person speaks at a time, and you can talk for three minutes.
So like I said, my, my bottom line is financially, developmentally, and competitively, if something has to be cut, it makes more sense to cut the freshman program and continue with the middle school program.
Um, does anyone else wish to comment one at a time? And we just have a three-minute limit.
Just to add-
Can you just say your name and your address?
Just to add, if those-
Very Troy Thurlow.
If those kids don't play middle school, you're going to, you think your numbers are going down now, you'll have no numbers. You'll have no, you'll be in, you'll be like Rockport. You'll have nine kids, but for, if you're lucky, seven for varsity.
Peter. Can Peter comment?
Yeah, Peter, and then, um, this is weird.
What, what grade does GAA go to? Sorry, five through eight? Eight. So if a freshman, we didn't have freshman sports, and a freshman got cut, he would have no place to play basketball, as opposed to an eighth grader that wasn't able to play, and the middle school team could play in GAA. Is that correct?
Correct, but instead of getting five hours a week of middle school practice and, and/or games, that eighth grader will get two hours a week, and one hour of practice, and maybe a game in the GAA travel program, just because of the, I mean, we would take more gym time if there's none available.
Why, why can't the freshmen be on the team of JV and varsity, but they're just not playing in the games?
What, and have them, have them practicing?
Can I respond further to Peter's comment?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so to your, to your question, okay, a ninth grader isn't good enough to make the JV or varsity team. So there's one year that he's going to lose developmental time touching the ball. To eliminate that middle school program, a kid could potentially lose three years of developmental time, because there's no program with the five-day-a-week. So it'll be three years lost development versus one year for that freshman kid. That freshman kid doesn't make the team, hopefully he's determined enough, he goes out, gets himself some training, and he makes the team his sophomore year. So he missed one year of development. These other kids are going to lose three years.
I don't understand the three years.
Because potentially, if you don't have a middle school program, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that kid has nowhere to go to practice every day.
Okay.
Can, can, so, so that's-
Oh, hold on.
Ellen, I have two questions. Uh, I would like to-
Can you just say where you live? She, Laura needs to put it in the minutes.
Don't tell them.
Uh, I would like if somebody could please explain to me the financial aspect, and how can you explain that the middle school program is losing money when we have over thirty children on, on the boys' and girls' teams, which equals over eight thousand dollars in user fees. We're only paying for a bus. They share a bus. They played, I think it was ten games last year, so we paid for a bus to go to five games. We paid for referees for five games, because we only paid for home games, and then we had a coach's stipend. The other question, the other thing I wanted to point out to the travel team, as a coach for travel team, the girls' travel team, GAA does a fantastic job developing the girls. However, the one practice that we have a week is in a shared gym in Penbrook. So we don't have an hour of a full gym. We have fifteen girls and boys in a half of a gym, in a small gym, to practice. That's what GAA is doing, to develop the program for the girls and the boys. If you lose the middle school program, you are going to lose athletes. They're going to lose interest, and they're not going to continue on to high school. But I would like an explanation on the financials, if possible.
Sure.
No, it's, if you want to go ahead- The coaches' stipends alone for both programs are over ten thousand dollars. So right there, then you have, um, officials for, I don't know how many games, the home games, and then, um, transportation.
And then we also have to allocate out the cost for the athletic director and the athletic office, which is about two thousand dollars, um, for each team. So each one runs-
Which that wouldn't be a savings, either way, either way you cut.
No, either way, right, exactly, right, right.
So what is the, what is that total, if you would, per team?
Without those, without those costs, and, and I think that's what we were confused today with the emails, was if we just looked at the salaries, the officials, and the transportation costs before the transportation went up, it was fifteen, fifteen, seven, twenty-four as a total. But our transportation went up a little bit with our new contract, so I don't have the detail on that, but it was over fifteen thousand.
But at the middle school level, it's assumed four home games, four away games, so it's a thousand dollars for a bus, for the four buses, based on what Chris just said. It's about five hundred dollars for the referees, because they're a hundred and twelve dollars per game. And you're saying five thousand dollars for the coach.
For each coach.
Right. But, okay, so boys, five thousand for a coach, five hundred for a referee, that's fifty-five hundred.
In, 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 um, in the budget, I wasn't here when it was developed, but they had seventeen hundred and forty dollars for officials.
That's grossly overstated, because it's a hundred and twelve dollars a game for a referee. So I don't know what that, I don't know where that number comes from.
I don't have it in front of me, but do you have the number of games played?
Four?
No, it's more than that.
No, I don't have the-
Projected road games are four, so we'd have home games would be six.
But that's actually times two, because they share a bus.
I don't have the-
Oh, I see, yeah.
Seventeen forty, seventeen forty, and then a little over a thousand for each of the, um-
Yeah, so when we do a bus, the boys and girls share, um, to the road sites. Going to a place like Rockport or Manchester does cost more, because it's further away, um, so that is something to think about.
That's why I'm giving you the benefit. On the boys' side, the cost for the boys' middle school team is five thousand per coach.
Yep.
Thousand dollars for the bus.
It's more, it's more than that.
Times four.
But it's more than that.
It's more than-
But it's not, because we're, even if we do five hundred.
Okay, you know what? I, I don't think we're going to get anywhere arguing, like, the points of the numbers. I think the bigger issue is-
Fee doesn't cover it.
Um, that the user fee isn't covering the cost.
My question was, I would like to understand how that is, and I don't think you answered that, because I think we disagree on the numbers. So I think as, as citizens of the town, that's great, we have a right to understand how you can say that it doesn't cover it. Am I wrong?
You're not wrong, but at this meeting, the purpose was not to go through the numbers. It was to review his recommendation and not to go line by line. We had this discussion back when we did the budget to actually establish the athletic budget.
But I, but I, but I do, but I, I think it's something to talk about, though, that, that you should understand what the numbers are, and, um, maybe right now, this meeting isn't the way to do it, but you should be able to understand that. So I'm not sure where I'm going with that, but-
Wouldn't the discussion that you had in your budget meeting be recorded in the minutes of that meeting?
I'm sure. It's in our budget books.
Our budget's transparent. It's not like we're hiding money.
I mean, it's just to answer her question, how could she get that information?
Parents, she should be able to have that information, so transparency is great.
I can tell you that I'm looking at a, a spreadsheet that has totals in it for, for the different categories. When Chris came over to my office, he had his thumb drive, which actually, I think, was what helped build the spreadsheet. They had the calculation behind, I have officials, each official costs seventeen forty, seventeen hundred and forty dollars for the boys, seventeen forty for the girls. In his, in his-
That's for the year?
Yes. And in his spreadsheet, he had a calculation that gave us that. Then we budgeted, so you have, you have ten thousand. Each coach is fifty-one, twelve, so you have that times two. Each official seventeen forty times two, and then each bus was one thousand seventy-one dollars. But that bus cost is increased because of our new contract, somewhat, because of the wait times. So, I mean, if you just take those numbers, it's fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars without increased transportation.
Right.
And with our current user fees, with thirty kids, you, you, um, collect eighty-four hundred dollars.
When you say current, are you saying two fifty-five or three twenty-five?
Two eighty.
Two eighty.
Okay, what about the-
Which is the two fifty-five plus the twenty-five.
Right, so it's two eighty, times thirty kids is eighty-four hundred dollars.
Yep.
So that means, you know-
You need seven thousand dollars.
We need seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars to run it, at the current user fee.
Right.
With a little wiggle room for transportation.
Cover, I mean-
Or, or understand why it says seventeen forty-two, when the cost of officials is four hundred and forty-eight dollars for four games. That, that number-
They played more than forty-eight.
Can we simply verify that?
Yeah, but they, they played more than forty-eight.
Everybody, just, let's just stop.
Total, so they might have played five.
Let's just stop for a minute. The issue, so, so maybe we're off by a thousand dollars, maybe. I, I, I'm not sure. We're going to have to go back and figure that out. The bigger issue is we have twelve thousand dollars we need to, twelve thousand plus or minus a thousand. If we give on that number, we just need to figure out what it is. Um, we need to figure out where we're going to fund that. Um, I mean, I still, and this is more of a committee issue, I still wrestle with what I'm hearing about, specifically the freshman girls' program last year, if, that it was all filled with eighth graders.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So-
And those kids are getting good competition. That's part of the-
For the girls.
So I get concerned that we'll, if we wipe out a middle school program, then where are those girls going to come from to go to the JV and the varsity teams later on? As opposed to keeping the fresh, keeping the middle school program intact, and kind of spreading our wealth, if you will, between the two schools? Because then you're allowing the girls to play completely through middle school, the boys as well. But the, it, the situation seems more critical for the girls.
I think the other thing to think about, I did come up with the extra cost as a scoreboard operator. That's part of it.
Why does someone have to be paid?
Because we've traditionally paid that person.
Because we've traditionally paid that person?
Yeah.
So it's, that's, because that's the way we've always done it. So five, twelve hundred dollars is going to a scoreboard operator?
It's, it's another part, it's another cost that we didn't talk about.
Okay, you know what, we're, we're, we can't go through, we, we know there's plus or minus a thousand, a thousand or fifteen hundred in there that's off. But we're still over-
I think, I think we should get back to your focus, that you're going to save more money and cut in the freshman program, and it's a better, better option.
I mean, I do want to respond to Anne's question. Um, the other thing to think about is eight teams in the KPN League do not have a middle school program. They're doing fine. They have great youth programs like we do, and I appreciate everything you guys do. Um, and they have competitive freshmen, JV, and varsity, with the exception of Rockport, as you pointed out, which is a very good point.
That's where you're going to head.
But size-wise, like, when I look at the size of the schools, I think we're probably the smallest, when you look at Rockport, Ipswich, and what'd you say, Manchester?
We're, we're larger than Rockport.
Are, we are?
We are.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
Overall, we are.
Um, so when I look at Rockport, which we know is not doing as well, um, Manchester, Essex, and Ipswich, um, we're small, we're right on the bottom with Rockport, size-wise.
Rockport also does not have a freshman program, as I recall.
On the girls' side.
They have, they have a middle school program.
But you're still only talking about fifteen kids. The roster can only be as big as it is.
Well, no, we expand the roster pretty freely.
Only when it's, only when it's one or two kids that it means they'd have to cut. Well, we, people argue that our roster sizes are too high. Remember, we have a lot of people in town who'd be very happy if our rosters on basketball were ten kids.
Right.
But the, the handbook that we developed said that we weren't cutting unless there was a minimum of fifteen children on the roster. So when you see sixteen, seventeen kids, that's only when there's literally two kids that need to be cut. Otherwise, if there are more, more people up for the team, then they make the cuts. The, the situations that have come to my attention, it's only been because there were just a couple of kids.
Didn't baseball, the two teams each carry eighteen kids last year for, for a sport that plays nine on the field?
Uh, we have in our handbook, Russ, minimum numbers before kids are cut, and that's what the coaches have been working with. Now, that's a philosophical, I told you, that's a philosophical discussion that we're not going to resolve today, but that's, that's all in our handbook. That's, we're trying to be true to what we said we were going to do. I just hate looking, um-
Hold on, I think Mr. Licas, did you, oh, okay. Rick Licas.
Rick Licas from Chelmsford, uh, North Street. Just a question back to the finances. When we had mentioned that there was a meeting this, this summer, that the raising the, uh, user fees was unpalatable, was there something significant changed from when we did the override, when it was possible to reduce the user fees, to now that we can't go back because it's unpalatable?
Because we, one of the things when we did the override, one of the items that we listed was to reduce, to use some of that funding to reduce user fees.
And that's one of the reasons I did vote for that, but was there not a, was, did something significantly change that that was actually a good idea to propose reducing the user fees? That they were okay to reduce last year, but they're unpalatable for this year? I guess I'm confused of why.
I'm not following your question, I'm sorry.
I guess the question is, why did we reduce the user fees last year? If in one year, without hearing a lot of things that have changed, we need to re- raise them back up again?
The problem being is that our costs keep going up, and we can't-
So there was something that was different?
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Well, actually, to, to be truthful, the last two years in athletics, we didn't end on the positive side. We had to actually take fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars out of school choice, because the combination of the user fees and what's in the budget did not keep pace with what the cost of the program ended up being.
The other, the other p- piece that goes into it is, the minute our numbers start to fall, we have fixed costs that start to go up.
We used to have six hundred athletes, I'd say, mm, three, three or four years ago. Peter would have to help us with that. And, and-
Six forty.
Six forty, we're down to five twenty-nine.
And we're down to fi- five forty, so that-
You're saying that we were below last year, or last two years, we've still been below. Why would we have reduced the user fees if we still weren't covering it?
Well, again, the anticipated cost of the program was more than what we had budgeted for. The business manager at the time said, this is the calculation he used, and, and truth be told, he probably did go down lower than he probably could have. But we thought the numbers were going to go up as we lowered the user fee.
We, yeah.
That, that was a calculated risk that we took, and it didn't end up being that we ended up with more athletes.
Can I ask a question today?
Sure. Just say your name and address.
My name's Michael Redden from Longview.
Okay.
If your school handbook stipulates that you're only going to take fifteen kids on a team, and your train of thought by lowering user fees is to increase participants, if you're only taking fifteen kids to a team, how do you think you're going to increase participants?
We have, we have other sports that we're not able to fill the rosters on.
So, then, is, would the question be to cut some of the other sports that you can't fill rosters on, other than the sports that you can fill rosters on?
They're not complete, they're, we're not talking that of fifteen plus, they're in the ten to eleven range. They're, you know, football last year, I can't remember the big-
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Total.
This year?
Last year.
Last year.
Forty-one now.
And we have forty-one now.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not a proponent for cutting any of kids' sports, but if you're telling me that basketball's meeting its numbers-
Well, it's meeting its numbers, but it's not covering its costs.
That's right.
That's the problem.
That's the difference.
George Shaw from Ballpark Road.
Thank you, George.
What's kind of counterintuitive about this argument that I see is that we've cut the user fees, and a year later, we're coming back and saying, well, now we're going to cut the team, and it's unpalatable to increase the user fees. And that just doesn't make any sense. If, if we shouldn't have cut the fees before, why are we avoiding raising the fees now?
Well, what's interesting is we've looked at fees, we did a twenty-five-dollar fee increase, and we also-
An increase of twenty-five dollars.
And we also looked at raising them up higher to see what we would need to fund it. And it just becomes, it becomes a number that, I mean, from my perspective, is unpalatable. I don't know where the rest of the committee is on it, but we looked at three fifty, I mean, and that doesn't cover us. We still have a twelve thousand dollar deficit in athletics. So at what point, I mean, five hundred divided by twelve-
If we raise it to three fifty?
But to, to take it to the other extreme, you, you tell me that my, my-
Forty-three thousand.
My child doesn't need to play middle school sports if there's other alternatives, there's AAU teams. Do you know what an AAU team costs to put a son or a daughter in it?
I do.
Do you think three hundred and fifty dollars is unpalatable to me, to, for my child to play school sports as opposed to AU sports? It's seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a sport?
That's, but we have, but we have to look, we have to look at all the students, and we have to bal- I mean, we have to look at the whole district.
I understand we have to look at the whole district and, and everything else, but I mean-
One of, one of the issues-
We're talking dou- double the cash to play an AU sport as opposed to playing a school sport.
Right.
At your higher, at your higher calculations, that would make the school profitable on their sports at three fifty a head.
One of the issues that I remember the board struggling hard with on the user fees was, um, how high they were in relationship to, uh, other towns. And then going up even higher with the user fees, and people who don't have that money. It became, uh, some people have, and some people don't have. And it, that was very hard for the board to, uh, come to terms with, which was part of, I think, what went into, you know, not going back up with the-
In the same year, people's taxes went up significantly. I think, you know, the committee, committee heard that, too, you know? It's hard to make it all match.
So I thi- and I think, you know, just quickly, looking at this, we'd have to raise across the board user fees to four hundred thirty-five dollars per sport to balance our budget.
Find it.
Hundred percent. That would, that would wipe out our twelve. So, so that's fine for basketball, because you're still getting a deal, if you will? Because it's about six fifty to seven fifty per person, but when you- getting a deal, if you will, because it's about six fifty to seven fifty per person, but when you're looking at, I'm gonna say cheering, uh, wrestling, I think, is another low, there's a few other low ones in there.
Middle school track.
Middle school track.
Yeah.
So, the, the twelve thousand.
They basically subsidize basketball.
The twelve thousand dollars that you're talking about, I'm having a hard time understanding whether that's in, whether that's a deficit in the basketball program or.
That's total athletic deficit.
Okay. So, why is there not, I mean, and we can argue about numbers, because I don't like the numbers at all anyway, but given that the numbers are, are what they are, how, why is there not a middle ground choice here of what is the deficit that the basketball program has to make up to continue and give the, you know, give the public the opportunity to raise those funds?
Well, it's interesting, because I looked at what would it cost to get middle school basketball at the whole, and it would be six fifty.
Yeah, what was the figure you listed?
I have something. But that was without the added piece of Chris.
I wrote five twenty-four, is what you said, yeah.
So.
But again, it starts putting some family members in places that.
This is, this is about public schools, and we don't feel that.
But some of those, but some of those numbers seem wrong.
Right, but when the overall.
It's a question, if you're, if you're a six fifty figure, uh, is, is that six fifty additional?
No, six fifty total. So it'd be the cost of an AAU program.
Over, over four hundred dollars per basketball player to make it whole. And the thirty-something kids playing the middle school team, doesn't that come up to the twelve thousand dollar shortage of the entire bas, of the entire athletic budget, not the basketball budget?
But there are other, the, the thing is, if you go lot, you have to go sport by sport. It's not.
But you just said that the deficit was twelve thousand dollars for the entire athletic budget, not the basketball budget.
Right.
But yet you wanna charge it all to the middle school basketball team, the twelve thousand dollars? I mean, if we're gonna go and spread it out over every sport, it's not an additional four hundred dollars for a basketball player. It's the entire athletic budget. It shouldn't come down on one sport to a middle school sport.
You say, yeah, ten, seven to ten.
You're con, you're considering all the other costs, but we have to pay them anyways.
Right.
So.
So there's a twelve thousand dollar deficit right now, if you eliminate the school sports.
So if it's seven thousand dollars.
What are you gonna save? Seven thousand dollars?
Seven thousand dollars. I mean, yeah.
So there's a twelve thousand dollars on top of already not having that in the budget.
Right.
You're gonna save seven thousand dollars. If you eliminate the freshman program, you're gonna save about twelve thousand dollars.
Right, so that's.
There's your deficit, all wiped out.
Again, remember, the coaches want the freshman program, the two varsity coaches. I think that's important.
But here, but here's the, here's the issue.
The coaches work for the citizens of the town.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the, the town doesn't work for the coaches. The coaches work for the town.
So I think, you know what, I think what we need to do as a committee is, we need to decide, one, he's made his recommendation to eliminate middle school basketball, so our options are, find a funding source, ask him to go back and look at middle school basketball and freshman basketball, and see if moving freshmen or eliminating freshmen and keeping middle school is a more viable option from all perspectives.
The other thing is, time is a factor. The schedule is made. And basically, the league is telling, asking me, are you in, are you out? Because they have, you know, everyone else is hinging, hinging on that.
What.
So what is the schedule?
What's the time that we need to?
They won ASAP, they went last week.
Won it last week. That's why we said it has to be on this discussion, it has to be tonight.
Well, can't we reach out to them and say, I mean, I'm willing to put in whatever time it takes from now until, say, Monday to look at it. I just, I, I do agree with what Russ is saying. I do think that um, those three years of the kids, I know they can play G A A, I know they can play travel, but it's different. Middle school sports are different than playing against, you know, your friends in G A A. I'm just thinking that, you know, when you say that eight K P N schools, you know, got rid of their programs, that doesn't mean that it's right, doesn't mean that it's right for our district. And I just think tonight, putting this all together and seeing the emotions that are going on, I just think that it would be beneficial for all of us to just take the time to maybe go through, maybe it is right for the freshman team to go.
But that's an operations issue, so you have to keep that separate. Your, your role is, if you, if you want to come up with, you, I'm hap, you wanna save the program, it's fine. You just have to find the money. And, and at the end of the day, I think maybe you should do a little straw poll here, and to see where the committee is, because if the majority of the committee wants to see the basketball program at the middle school maintained, then we find the fund, then, it's easy, we have to find the funding.
Is that we have, we have funds, and what we haven't discussed, and I'm not sure that this is the place to have that discussion, is if we decide we want to save that program and we want to allocate those funds, what, what's the downside to us choosing as a committee to allocate funds to keep the middle school basketball program?
There isn't a downside to it. It, except you've gotta find the money, right? That, that's really, so, so if the mon, if, I, I've told you a couple places that you can look.
Right.
Um, and again, if, if, I mean, that's a pretty easy solution, if you come up with the money.
Right, but they're not, they're not sustain, I understand, so this, this, that's a good point. They're not sustainable solutions. But there are solutions that would keep this program in the school for this year.
For this year. Right.
And then we can look at this when the, when does it come up again? When we do the budget for next year?
When we do the budget for next year, yep.
And again, keep in mind, you're gonna lose your freshman girls' basketball team if you do this. Whether, for better or worse.
I don't understand. Because if you're saying the eighth grade numbers, can't, the eighth grade girls won't be able to play.
Okay.
Excuse me, that's not true, okay, because first of all, your freshman team last year was all eighth graders, then our freshman this year, okay? So you're only talking about the seventh, eighth graders that will actually be able to play middle school now, okay? So, you really don't have freshman kids that are playing. The, the freshman kids, they already played freshman.
Right, but they're gonna move up.
Correct. They're gonna move up to JV?
Yeah.
So you, you're only talking about seven, eighth grade girls, is really the number you're looking at, okay? And again, I'm only gonna state this again, just based on Rockport, when you, you have to look at the future here, okay? Because this, this decision's gonna impact down the road. MIA is already looking to put Georgetown in Division Three, okay? We get our budget kicked already, okay? But I know, my kid's been in there for six years, okay? We already get our budget kicked. You get, you're gonna move up a division, and then you're gonna stop losing girls? Kids will, you're not gonna have a program. You're gonna be, you're gonna be worse than Rockport. You'll have five kids, if you're lucky. So then you'll have no basketball. You won't have to worry about any budget.
Just one, another member of the public, and then we're just gonna stop the, going back and forth.
Bill, quick question. Mr. DeFranco, you say there are eight towns that have cut the middle school program, and they're fine. Can I ask you what towns those are? Are they proportionately the same size as Georgetown? Are you talking about much larger towns that have more children that would be interested in playing versus a town the size of Georgetown?
I hadn't considered that before when, um, they mentioned, you know, Manchester, Rockport, Ipswich are the ones that have it, and they are some of the smaller schools.
Right.
But Winfield is.
The ones that have cut those, what I'm curious.
Right, yeah, they're the ones that have capped it. Um, but Winfield's a similar size. Hamilton Wyndham is obviously bigger. Um, Amesbury is bigger, um, Mascanama, you can run down the whole.
So the, the ones that have cut it in a fine are bigger towns than Georgetown? Is that what you're saying?
The exception to Winfield.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as a committee, our choice, it, we have to decide whether we wanna look at, go back, ask Mr. DeFranco to go back and look at middle school versus freshman, see if that alternative from it, and whether he wants to do that, whether we want to identify a funding source, or nothing. I guess, those really are two options as a committee. Bear in mind, it's, it's his job to determine how the athletic budget's gonna work. That it's an operations issue with Carol and the administrative team to work through that budget.
Can I just ask one more question about this issue of losing the freshman girls' basketball team? I mean, isn't there fluctuation from year to year in how many students at each grade level are going to play? And do you make a decision that affects the entire program going forward based on what could be an anomaly for this year?
I would say, well, again, I coached freshman basketball for six years, and I coached middle school for one year. Um, and the freshman numbers traditionally have a lot of middle schoolers. The girls, almost exclusive. The boys, it varies. Um, I had, I've had teams that had six freshmen, six middle schoolers. I've had teams that were all freshmen, teams that were closer to all middle school. So it really does vary from year to year.
Right.
But the problem is, just like if you cut middle school basketball, if you cut freshman basketball, it's gonna be very hard to get back. So it's, it's the same problem.
But when you look, uh, the thing that I look, that I really struggle with is we have a high school with four hundred students in it, and we're gonna have three levels of boys and girls teams. So we're gonna have six basketball teams for four hundred students. And we're gonna have a middle school of four hundred roughly, and we're gonna have, we could have none. So I still get back to just distributing back, you know, giving the high school two, two teams for each, for boys and girls, and then one for the middle school. Just, I just, you know, I have to believe that it's gonna really help them. You know, I think it'll, I just think it'll give them an alternative, if you will.
And I think we, at some point, we do have to have a philosophical discussion about middle school athletics in general.
Uh, yeah.
Because most of the teams in the league don't have them anymore.
Right.
And we have to think about what, what do we wanna do with that? We used to have a very strong middle school soccer program. It's gone. We, we used to have a very strong middle school field hockey program. It's gone. So, you know, do we.
But why don't we keep revisiting that? Like, um, you know, like when the new sixth graders come in and see if, if they are showing interest? Because I just think by going by saying, you know, last year we didn't have the numbers, so this year we might not. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I think I do know.
Soccer went away because of lack of interest.
Over ti, over time. For a period of time, it was very successful.
That's not an issue with middle school basketball.
Right. So, okay, is it, I think, you know, as a committee, we just need to decide which, what route we're gonna take. Do we wanna look for a funding source? Bearing in mind, it's not sustainable. There's, and if we go with that funding, then we won't be funding other, you know, things that could come up. It'll be coming out of choice.
And the funding sources, how much?
We need twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve.
Ten to twelve.
I thought we said seven to ten. Yeah, she, Jill is thinking seven, you're thinking ten, so.
Because she's looking at the, the distributive cost across.
Yes, that's what we had said.
Anne's looking at the distributive cost of, of, of what we needed to balance.
We just, we just looked at middle school basketball.
Right, yeah.
But I think, I think what we need as a committee though is a number. We don't need like seven to twelve. We need to know exactly how much we're looking at.
I'm looking at option A, which has three hundred fifty, are we in option A or B? I can't remember.
Yeah, you picked option B. Option A was the three fifty.
So, option B has total revenue, total expenses of two eighty-eight, user fees of one sixty, revenue of seventeen, budget of sixty-five. So total budget user fees and revenues, two forty-three, less two eighty-eight is forty-five thousand. And we take thirty-three out of choice already. So I'm assuming that fifty to eighty thousand dollar number had the thirty-three of choice taken out? So, to me, forty-five minus thirty-three is twelve.
Okay.
So we need twelve.
Remember that, yeah, because that didn't include middle school basketball, so that makes sense.
I kind of like what Alana was saying about, we could look at this again when the budget comes up next time, um, for next year, and just fund what we have in place and find, and it's not sustainable, but we would revisit the, the question of keeping the freshman team when we review next year's budget.
But, but come up with a funding source now.
But we come up with a funding source now for this year, that's my.
Okay, so let's be clear, that last year we ended in a deficit, and.
We can't end in a deficit this year.
We, we will, we will eliminate the possibility to end in a deficit. We can't. So if, what do we do when our numbers start to fall apart? Which is my concern.
Well, what do you think?
We gotta recruit or something here, right?
No, I, I guess that's, my bigger concern is if we start to, if we go down this road of funding, like identifying a funding source and using that, that's fine. But if our numbers start to fall apart, we've already committed twelve, so we're down to a very limited pool to continue to fund.
And if we have an emergency like we have right now.
And, and he just brings up a good point.
Numbers don't, numbers don't get, don't, the rosters don't get filled.
We know basketball's gonna get filled.
Basketball will, right.
But we have other sports to consider.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
If those don't fill, then we're in.
Then we're gonna need to fund those, and we'd be.
We'll need to fund the difference, and we're already about five thousand dollars that we've spent on transporting students to April.
That will take out of the transportation line.
Right.
Which would lend, if the numbers did fall apart, so to speak, then that would lend a different tone to our discussion when we build next year's budget.
No, we'll have to do it this year. Like if spring sports don't.
Right, right, I understand we would do it this year.
No, no, for this year's budget.
We can't end the year and then make it.
End the year in a deficit.
Okay.
So what you're saying is hypothetically, if the roster for, say, spring sports don't fill, and you come to us looking for money so that we can have, I, I'm.
We can't end the year in the red.
Excuse me for being ignorant about what the sports, the seasons are, but in the spring, we may say, sorry, no money.
Right.
If we say yes now, we're looking at saying to another sport in the spring, we can't help you out, you gotta fold your program.
We, we could be. I don't know that that will happen.
We don't, we can't predict that.
We hope not, we hope not.
We hope not.
It's all based off of.
But what we, but I don't, I mean, thinking about what we have in the spring, I, I don't anticipate that.
Softball's scary.
Yeah, softball, softball, boys and girls across, middle school track, and baseball are our spring.
Boys and girls across, right?
Boys and girls across are strong, baseball's very strong, softball, the numbers have been going down.
Yeah, okay.
The numbers have been going down progressively over the years, you're saying? We have fewer and fewer, so if we have to make a decision to cut softball this year versus basketball, where you're saying the numbers are going up, where we have.
Well, they're ma, they're, they're capped, and we can't go.
We don't have a middle school softball program.
Nope.
That would make more sense.
And, and a lot of you have brought up a really good point, and I think this is, is the point, that the problem with basketball is it's fifteen kids on a roster, but their, you know, their costs are the same or greater than a sport like football or cross country or cheering, where we have twenty, twenty-five kids. And I love basketball, I absolutely do. It's my second favorite sport. Um, and, you know, I absolutely love it, and I hate to see it cut. And we're trying to do everything we can, but, you know, sometimes it's, we have to make tough decisions.
Now, who, back to the costs again, I think that seventeen hundred should, should and could be evaluated for savings, because you have a whole school full of kids that are required to do ten hours worth of community service during this, during the year. Is it really necessary to pay some kid to sit at the scores table and do?
We can, we'll go through, we, he can go through the numbers.
I actually looked at the K P N handbook, and it actually says that an adult is supposed to be doing the clock in the scorebook. But, I mean, there's, there's some costs, I think, that, that could be.
There's some very mature students.
Yeah, that, that could be evaluated, and a question, how are the coaches' salaries determined?
It's the union.
They're negotiated, Russ.
The teacher's contract.
And the teacher's contract.
Was just, uh.
Okay, so if, if I were to apply for a coaching position at the high school, even though I'm not involved in the union, you still have to pay me the out, the union wage?
Mm-hmm.
Can he go for a long wait?
Where do you get those applications? I mean, because when I, when you think about five, five thousand dollars for a guy that spends probably fifty hours, he's getting a hundred dollars an hour to coach the freshman and middle school team.
I get it, Russ, but it's a negotiated number.
Okay, moving right.
Gets posted.
Moving right along.
Still feeling the way I stated earlier.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, is that what you're thinking, Alana?
Yes.
And that's what Pam's thinking. What are you thinking, Rob? Might as well just do it with.
I'm struggling with the money part.
But there's a, another thing that we also have to be really mindful with, on the money side. We asked for a two hundred fifty thousand dollar warrant article on Monday. If that is not funded.
There's a big picture.
If that, that, for extraordinary expenses, which, knock on wood, will be funded, if that's not funded, we, and those expenses come to fruition, which we believe, there's gonna be a strong probability that the majority of it will, we're gonna be forced to fund it with our budget.
Which means reductions.
Which means mid-year reductions. And I'm not trying to be, I'm not scaring anybody, but the reality of it is, I had to sit there Monday night and ask for that, so if it doesn't get funded, we're gonna need to do something.
No, that's a good point. Everybody, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I know what we had to ask for on Monday, and it's unfortunate that we had to ask for it, but the way I look at it is, this, you know, I just, I really hate to see it go. Whatever we, whatever I think we need to do right now.
I'm not proposing to let it go. I'm just.
No, but we need to look at this right now and say, okay, this is important to us, it's important to a lot of people, and I think it's worth the time that we're all willing to put into it, to figure it out.
Well, I'm not sure there's anything to figure out.
I was gonna say, we don't have anything to figure out. Still, we want to identify a funding source.
It's just, that's really what you're down to, because I'm hearing that you have the majority.
Why couldn't you fundraise? Why, I don't understand why you couldn't. The girls, the varsity girls went up and fundraised three thousand dollars last year in two weeks for uniforms. We, we can't fundraise across the board for twelve thousand dollars?
Have you considered asking the parents how many could come up with the money?
It's, the pro, the issue with fundraising, and we can't keep going back and forth with this, but the issue with that is it's still not sustainable. We, then we're required every year to go out to balance out-
We'll fundraise every year. How about instituting a gate fee?
Uh, there, you know what, there-
That's a sustainable fee.
It is-
I'm gonna go watch my daughter play every game. It's costing me five dollars to go to the game and go watch my daughter play. I'm gonna pay the five dollars every time I go to the game.
It's like you're not trying. You're not trying to find a way.
I mean, there are ways to-
Okay.
Wait, I, I think I'm hearing the committee saying that the majority of the committee is looking for a funding source, so you're kinda getting what you want. So, let's just relax a minute here.
We do want to try to find a way.
Let's, let's try to, let's try to be fair here.
But we have to be mindful of the fact that we have to be prudent and do something that's sustainable. Because we're all gonna be back here next year having the same conversation about another sport.
But I do think a lot of good points were brought up, like the, the gate, I think that's great, the gate fee. I think fundraising, I mean, they're all creative ideas that we can think about. I love fundraising. I'll fundraise as much as anyone wants to help me with it. I think, I think there are some good points, though.
Right, uh, where we can come up with the money other than the budget.
Why, why are we here at this meeting tonight, having to make this decision tonight versus having to re-
Actually, the, the decision is to either, it's, we don't have to vote on anything. It's an operations decision that's through Carol, through Mr. DeFranco. It's his recommendation to balance the athletic budget.
So, it's Mr. DeFranco then you're saying, who perhaps could solicit parents' input on where the money could come from, and if parents have ideas about fundraising? That's, I mean, that's what I'm wondering. We're hearing these ideas and these parents saying, ask us for the money. And we're standing here going, no, we gotta look at our budget for the money. And they're saying, ask us for the money. We'll help you. Why aren't we, whose job is it to listen to them say, ask us for the money? Whose job is that?
It's our job to do that, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that what we're deciding and what we're doing is sustainable.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, we can absolutely, I mean, if someone wants to drop twelve thousand dollars in our lap or fundraise twelve thousand dollars, that's fantastic, but what do we do next year when we're balancing our budget? Where does that funding-
If there's an instituted, if there's some, I mean, when I was in school, we did a, I remember doing a lot of fundraising for the things that I participated in.
Right.
And you knew they were coming every single year, because that was just part of the school cycle, and if you participated in this, you went out and you raised money.
And, and, and I agree, and I think if you really look at how much money the parents already fundraise in this town for, they buy uniforms, that mean, I've had parents, see, there's two sides, there's two sides to the issue. And there are parents who feel like, I just want, I just, I can't do anymore. So, I think, you know, maybe there's a way you can do it where the committee finds money, and then if, as, if people choose to want to get money together and then donate it back to the, to the school, then this committee can apply it to the lines that they're spending, and it, it can work. It certainly can work both ways.
I mean, if you look at what we approve every week in donations, it's amazing. So, it's not that we're, we're not appreciative and, you know, realize that parents do a lot for us.
It's just one of the mechanisms, I guess. Is that, it sounds to me like there's parents in the audience here who are saying, don't take our sport.
Right.
Help us understand the mechanisms whereby we can bring money in to fund the sport. And so, that's, that, that's, I, I wanna know what is-
Join the boosters.
What do we do?
Right. We have the all sports, we have the all sports boosters. Join them and figure out how they're doing their fundraising and what they're doing with it.
I, I, I think that's a great, I, I think that's a, part of, part of the side of being-
We're gonna cut the program, but you want me to be an all sports booster's member?
That supports the high school.
Okay, you know what? We have to decide as a committee how to do this.
Part, part of the, part of our job also is that we're a public school, and I have to, I'm only speaking for myself, but there are people who have no more money to give. And I appreciate that there are people out here that wanna do this, and as you're saying. But probably some people that aren't sitting here, and that's an, that's not consistent with a public school. And, and that's part of the picture, too.
In terms of raising user fees, I mean, there's a lot of people, you know, these are public schools, and if you raise user fees very high, then you end up with the kids who can afford it get to play, and the kids who can't afford it don't get to play. And that's not the concept of public education.
But if you don't raise the fees, nobody gets to play. The program goes away and nobody gets to play.
You can let the free market decide, but-
Well, I mean, it's, there's no doubt that over time, the fees are gonna go up.
Guys, we, we still need to, we can argue every point on this, whether we raise user fees, whether we sell T-shirts, whether we cut every sport or no sports. But the end of the day, our decision is, do we want to identify a funding source? Do we want to look at the other, at another option?
Well, so, Anne, if we do that, if that's what the, the committee says, how do we go about doing that? Like, is it, you know, I, I understand you need to get back to, um, you know, MIAA as far as where we're going with it. So, what timeframe are we looking at?
Tonight. Tonight.
Tonight.
Tonight. You're, you're, if I hear the commit, I mean, so I think that there are at least three people on this committee, at least three. I, I can't quite get where Rob is right now, but there are at least three committee, people on this committee that said they like to identify a funding source. So, I'm, I'm asking, I'm offering you an option, and that is choice. That is, that is the only thing that does not impact the budget in a way that means we have to cut something else that we were planning to do already.
What is left in choice after now?
Well, we were talking about that today. Based on what we've committed to in choice, we anticipate we're going to have between fifty and eighty thousand dollars left at the end of the year as a balance. So, obviously, we, you know, I mean, that's a, that we gotta issue with sustainability on that, too. But-
Can we confirm the number of students that are choicing in? We know our revenue is accurate.
Basically, to the extent that we can know our revenue is accurate. As I said, we brought in room of ten kids this year also, so that added a little bit of revenue. So, if you needed to take twelve thousand dollars, I believe you would have the money. You're not going, going to it in a deficit for school choice. But again, everything's a trade-off, right? So, if you have some kind of extraordinary emergency, that's not a source you can go to. Because it, it, you know, it just isn't. But this particular situation, if you're looking for a source tonight, that's where I would suggest you go, and Joan and I are in agreement with that recommendation.
And I, I, I think, I think for myself, considering the nature of, um, the townspeople who are here and getting a distinct feeling that this is all last minute for them in terms of responding to this and not getting the information, you know, I'm willing to go along with the other, with a very strong caveat that I will not do that again next year. There'll have to be a solution next year, well in advance, where we need your input. And we work this thing out to the best of our ability so that we avoid coming back, just like we're doing tonight.
Much of this information is new to me, too, and that would give us time to really consider and look at the freshman team and what would be all of the implications of, of not funding them the next year.
And you, you might find some of that money. When the girls' freshman team doesn't exist, the money that would have gone to that will come back in.
That's right. That's right. That might work, yeah.
What's not having a girls' freshman team?
He's anticipating that the eighth graders can't be, be working on the freshman team. There, there may not be the numbers, but we don't know that.
So, yeah, you-
No, hold on. Last year, just so that I can be clear, last year's freshman team was made up of all eighth graders.
Yes.
And they're freshmen this year.
And they're freshmen this year.
And they'll most likely move up to JV.
Okay. So, did we not have enough on the JV team last year?
There was ten or eleven. Yeah.
Yeah. So, he's just saying it might not be a full roster, that's all. But, but that remains to be seen, right?
What savings would that be?
About five thousand dollars.
So, but what does that do to our other sports? Does that mean we have to-
He's just saying there might be some flexibility. You might not need to take as much money out of choice.
If we don't fill the girls' team, do we have to cut a boys' team? How does that work?
No, because we offered it.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's Title IX.
Title IX, yeah, that's what I was worried about.
If, if we said, oh, we're not gonna offer girl, freshman girls' basketball, we'd be in a huge Title IX violation.
Okay, then you'd have to cut freshman boys.
Right, but because we're offering it.
You're offering it, but you can't fill it. That's a different story. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay. All right. So, it's, what do you think about the idea of choice? I, I would be in favor of that.
Do you need a motion?
All right, so the chair will entertain a motion to fund the current athletic deficit of roughly twelve thousand dollars after applying thirty-three thousand dollars from choice, from choice.
How moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chris.
Come on next to us.
Oh, you're still up, yeah. We're not gonna make any friends on this one either.
Seen such a turnout.
Yeah, everyone's sticking on for MCAS, right?
You're gonna say, because I, I didn't get to make a comment.
Is that you are worried about if the numbers fall apart, right? If we could, as a school, kind of maybe make that more concrete, that we can make sure that we have the numbers by giving it support, giving the programs, um, kind of a advertisement almost, so that we get support from the students.
Right.
And because when it comes down to-
Can we come up with an idea?
Excellent idea.
That's a great idea. Excellent.
I mean, and really let the students know how important it is for the viability for everybody.
Well, that's the captain's role here, that you can convey to the student body what happens in your sport. Coming up with four players.
All right, let's keep moving along, so we can, okay. All right, all right, here we go.
To the discussion, I just, I thought that, and excuse me, because I have a really bad cold. I can't speak up, but-
All right. Next up is-
Excellent. Excellent, thank you.
Actually, Chris, you know what? You're up here.
Yeah, let's, let's leave Chris up here.
So, oh, now, let's have some more good news.
Yes, that's it. We're not gonna make any new friends on this next round.
Do you know when our first frost is gonna be?
Put the recommendation in.
I'll check my farmer's almanac.
October, week of October sixth is what the farmer's almanac is.
All right.
Okay, so, uh, we just put on, um, we're, we're gonna come back to the MCAS thing. We put on, uh, just an update for you on the response to, uh, the triple E. And, um, you know, I think, and the principals are here, and obviously, they can talk a little bit more about, you know, what they're, how the implications of, of how this is working. So, we thought maybe we'd have Chris just give you a brief update or overview on what we've done with the sports programs, because we've had to be quite creative. Uh, and fortunately, we have nice neighbors who have been willing to help us out. There is a slight impact in cost, which obviously you're seeing. But since Georgetown is considered a critical area, um, the, the Board of Health was very adamant that, um, and I talked to her as recently as Monday morning, um, adamant that if, it, the ban is from three to nine, and the reason it's three is because, because of Georgetown's critical status, and apparently, as the weather gets cooler, the, the mosquito activity happens earlier. I didn't realize that. I learned that. And then, um, during the day, only with protection. She's very clear on that, so I, of course, say, what does protection look like? And she says, they gotta be dressed, you know, they, their bodies have to be covered, and they, and they have to be sprayed with bug spray. Now, the bottom line is it's really tough for us to manage that. We can't just randomly be spraying, um, people's children with bug spray. Uh, we, we don't know whether kids were sprayed in the morning before they came, um, and it's been a nightmare, I'll, I'll say, and I, kudos to the teachers and the aides and all of the people who have really been trying, particularly at the elementary level, to make this work. Um, you know, it, kids need the fifteen minutes of, you know, uh, exercise. There's no doubt about it. But as we, we've talked about it as an administrative team at length, and of course, we all have different opinions, you know, I, there, there, we aren't in agreement a hundred percent, but what we did agree to at the end is that the recommendation we would make to the committee is that reluctantly, we think the hun, the only way we can guarantee a hundred percent that no one is going to be infected during the school day is to not have students be going outside for gym or for recess. Understanding it's a burden, it's not, not good for the kids, but I don't think any of us, and again, maybe ninety-nine point nine percent chances that no one would ever be affected. But I don't know that anybody in this room, and I certainly and the administrators do not want to have that on our head, that if anything ever happened, that we, you know, we, we just didn't, didn't make the choice. The Board of Health said she'd support us either way, but she said, you do need to make sure there's protection. I did research it with our attorney to talk about the liability issue, that maybe what we could do is have parents sign off saying, we let you spray our children, but then we don't really want the responsibility or liability of that either. If a child has an allergic reaction, bug spray gets, you know, lots of things could happen. And then the other thing is, uh, could they sign off saying, I took responsibility and I hold the district completely harmless? And, you know, at the end of the day, we said, you know, a hundred percent, the only way we can be a hundred percent safe is to not have kids go outside.
What, what did they say, though, to that last option?
Uh, our attorney said that if, as long as we were having people sign off, that that's possible, but then, of course, if something happens, we're gonna get sued anyway.
I understand.
I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
So, no recess until first frost?
You know, reluctantly, I, I'm, and-
Is there any ability on the elementary level that they would be able to have, um, recess, maybe in the gym, if it's large enough to hold them?
Well, that's something that the principals have been trying to come up with creative ways. My, I don't know, Margaret and Donna, if you wanna, I mean, Donna has five hundred thirty students at one gym, so that's a little bit of a trick, but-
That's the problem. They have, they use all their spaces.
I, I have been able to free up some of the gym for about fifteen minute increments, so teachers can sign up, take the kids down.
Cause I agree, you know, they, they do need some large motor things.
And for the-
And then, well, the sports, maybe Chris could talk about quickly what we've done.
Sure. So, I think the first thing that's important to state is the coaches, the players, you know, everyone involved has been really helpful and supportive, and has really been on the same team, which is important, because a couple naysayers and the whole thing falls apart. So, you know, kudos to them for doing the right thing. So, basically, we've been busing our kids to Haverhill, um, to Riverside Park to practice. Um, there's a fairly adequate facility. It's right behind the stadium, so we're actually able to use some of their equipment from the stadium, um, on a day-to-day basis. All of our home games are on the road right now, uh, so other schools have been very accommodating with that and finding fields. Mascalommet especially has actually offered us fields for a home game for us where we weren't even playing Mascalommet, so they actually let us use a field for that, because we were in a jam.
Hey, Chris, excuse me for interrupting, but with Haverhill, um, have you checked with, uh, the, the website for tracking and mosquitoes and which have been found? And if I'm not mistaken, and I probably am, but Haverhill has been identified with mosquitoes and triple E, and I'm just wondering what that's about?
Um, they're, they set their curfew at dusk, as opposed to us who, um, have set our curfew at three o'clock.
Yeah.
So, that's the major difference. Their Board of Health doesn't deem it, I, I don't wanna say-
They're not deemed, they deem critical. They're not.
Amesbury is now. Amesbury is, but everyone else is high, you know, even in the area. I mean, all the area schools have, 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 I think we even had a a big meeting of all the, of the league officials to talk about it, because it's affecting everyone.
Have nighttime restrictions. About half of them don't. So, Mascalommet, believe it or not, doesn't. Um, Hamilton Wyndham doesn't. So, there's different, there's different risk levels in different towns and-
Woods and horses.
So, well, thank you to all of our neighbors then that have been so calm.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, we, we do-
Coaches and teachers and everyone have been phenomenal.
But bear in mind, it all comes at a cost. We're up to about five thousand right now for transportation.
Comes out of the snow budget.
Yeah, our robust snow budget.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Chris, thank you for all your help.
Thanks, Chris. You're doing a great job.
For putting in all the time and extra- For Chris's first year as athletic director, he's had all kinds of things to deal with.
Doing a good job.
Welcome. Doing an interesting every day. Yes.
All right, moving right along, superintendent's report, MCAS district overview.
Yes, we, uh, so we have some-
Oh, Julie, hi. Well, so we have some new things to report to you. So, um, Julie and I are just gonna kind of fly through this, uh, PowerPoint.
So, we don't expect this to be the only presentation you're going to be receiving on this. Uh, there are a lot of new things this year that we are gonna be talking to you about. We're gonna be coming back and talking not only about this, but we're gonna be talking about the new teacher and administrative evaluation process, because you have a role in that. So, there'll, there'll be a number of these kind of informational kind of sessions. Uh, so, we're gonna, we're gonna go through this report very quickly, and there's some very brief data summaries that we're gonna go over, some, I think, some very encouraging, uh, news, ways to look at some data, and then obviously, some areas that, that we're gonna be able to focus on. But what I wanna say before we start, though, is, you know, it's a bit of history, because now, I'm happy, because I'm, I'm here six years now. So, I have history. I have history. I can, I can talk about it. Donna has history. Peter has history, and the others are learning quickly.
So, I'm slower than you.
But when I first came here, one of the very first things that people were very, very angry about was the fact that at Pembroke School, there were seventy-five percent of the kids in fourth and fifth grade that were in the bottom two categories. And how could that be happening in Georgetown? And frankly, that was one of the questions I asked when I came here. How can that be happening in Georgetown, where all of the conditions for learning tend to be positive? You don't have ethnic, ethnic racial tensions, low income, um, ELL. I mean, those things don't exist, so how could that happen? Two family homes, some affluence. How could that happen? And, you know, we found out there were a lot of reasons for it, but when we were trying to attack the problem, it was, it was like we were attacking it from multiple angles, because there were so many things that needed to be attacked at once. Now, the good news is, now we're not talking about seventy-five percent of the kids in the bottom two categories. Now, we're talking about taking the majority of kids being proficient in advanced, and now taking those proficient kids and moving them to the advanced. The biggest problem we had was the needs improvement category was way, way, way too high. And the things that we've been doing over six years, the, the work we've been doing with curriculum, the teachers' professional development, the efforts the teachers have been putting together, the coordination between the elementary schools, all of those things are having a definite difference. And so, now- And so, now, when you start looking at the data we're looking at, we can, I, now, we're at the point where we can go in more closely with a laser, because now, the areas that we're, we have as weaknesses are definite weaknesses. And the other things that we're doing show that the progress we're making is moving children in the right direction. And we're getting much more positive response, reactions, and that's the goal of MCAS, lever for improvement. You take it, you use the information, and as kids go through to the tenth grade, and they take the test, and a hundred percent of the students graduate with an MCAS diploma, that tells you that, you know, that the, when we follow the cohort groups, the kids who start in third grade and take the test every year, by the time you get to tenth grade, you're seeing twenty-five to thirty-five percent, percentage points improvements over time, because the longer they're here, the more they get the standards-based education, the more their performance improves. That's the right way to go. So, when we're going to talk to you a little bit here, you're going to see, we're not only going to identify some of the, the strengths, but we're also going to identify a few areas that we know are going to require more strategic action planning. And that's, we're happy about that, because it seems like it's manageable, as opposed to where we have to target all kinds of things at one time. So, kudos to all the teachers and the staff and the principals and people who have been willing to sort of follow the plan and, uh, and work hard to, to really be changing, um, the, the landscape for student achievement, particularly at the elementary and middle levels. Okay, so, with that, let's go, Julie.
All right. Um, I will not read this giant slide to you, however, what I wanted to do is just to give you some really key, uh, pieces of information that would hopefully shed some light on why we even have the changes that we have in, in the, the way that data is reported by the state. So, this presentation is to provide you with information about the changes that have resulted in our state's, um, accountability waiver that we have, um, adjusted for since February of two thousand and twelve. And, uh, the number of changes that we have in terms of how we label specific schools, um, in the past, we would label schools as identified for improvement or corrective action or restructuring with the, the previous reporting categories from the Department of Ed. But now, uh, with the new accountability system, our, um, a hundred percent proficiency expectation by two thousand and fourteen has been changed with the goal of narrowing proficiency gaps by half by two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. And then, I'll talk to you a little about AYP to PPI, what those acronyms really mean, and, uh, some of the number crunching that goes along with that. So, um, all in all, districts are assigned, I'll just go back really quickly, um, levels. Um, I, I'm sure you've heard of other districts that are in leveled status, and that, that was a typically, um, negative connotation, if you are a level three or a level four or a level five district. That whole system is changed to accommodate for levels one through five, and that's how every district is now identified across the state.
Julie, what, what, I'm sorry, what did Massachusetts get when they applied for, uh, this waiver? Did Mass get anything for that?
What do you mean, got?
Um, did they receive anything in return if you applied for this waiver from the federal government? Was there any?
We had to make a number of changes in terms of how we would assess students and how we would, um, accommodate our proficiency gaps. So, we had to change the way that we looked at, um, students who had, are neediest populations, so we had to really look at how we would adjust to those numbers, and, and actually, even though we're not at, at the goal of a hundred percent proficiency for the state of Massachusetts, um, what it's done is really identified for us the very specific and targeted places where we have to support our students better. So, I'm going to get into that a little bit, but we'll definitely do that over time, that's fine, no, that's fine. Okay, so, when you look at the data later on, um, you'll see that, uh, each school has a percentile between, uh, numbers one through ninety-nine, and those indicators identify for us, um, typically, where our schools fall in a range of one to a hundred. Um, and also, it will identify for us where our students fall in the aggregate, which is all students, in the high need subgroup, which is the other reporting category. So, every single district in the state of Massachusetts, um, is going to have data reported on these two populations, the aggregate, all students, and, um, the subgroups that are part of the high need subgroup. And those subgroups are the low incomes, our low-income students, students with disabilities, English language learners, and our former, or students that were former English language learners, who we track over, um, a number of years, their progress. This is the scary slide, so, let me just give you this, the, um, the upshot here. Um, the PPI is a transition from AYP, which was adequate yearly progress, to our performance indicators. So, our expectation here in Massachusetts is that we will narrow our proficiency gaps, we will, um, start to monitor really closely our student growth percentiles, and that's also factored into the new PPI ratio. And we will also identify schools, um, between the five, five to seven indicators. And so, what I kind of typed up for you here was that our annual PPI indicates progress from one year to the next, and it incorporates at the elementary level, um, five indicators, so narrowing proficiency gaps in our ELA tests, our mathematics tests, our science tests, and then, the student growth within those tests for ELA and for mathematics. Cumulative PPI is a little different, because it represents a trend over time, and right now, we have four years' worth of data that we're, that the state is using to identify our trends over time. And so, that cumulative PPI, um, is typically expected to be at a range of seventy-five or higher, um, and that's, that's the targeted goal for all schools in the state. Okay, but obviously, we'll get into this a little bit more, there are other indicators that are, that are part of PPI. Um, at the high school level, it's not just the five that I referenced before, but it also incorporates, um, a dropout, um, the dropout ratio and the, the cohort graduation ratio, so that's a little bit different for the, the tenth grade data. And so, what I have here is just a really quick rundown of how PPI targets are reported, it's on a hundred-point scale. So, on the range of one, you know, zero to a hundred, if you are, if your score is ra, if your school or your district is in the seventy-five range, that means you're on target, which is not a number that we would necessarily, in our minds, um, associate with being on target. Seventy-five seems to be something, you know, you're still striving, and, and I think that's still how we look at that as well. Um, if your school's falling in a fifty range, that means you've improved, but it's below the state's target for your school. Um, if you are ranging in the twenty-five, that means there's no change over time, and if your score is somewhere, and your subgroups are in the aggregate at the zero, that means your numbers have declined over time. So, the, you know, it's, it's an interesting, brand-new calculation that every school district is, is currently working through and trying to identify, you know, how, how do we wrap our minds around this, and, and how do we make this make sense to other people? Um, but what they did come out and say, in, in some of the DESE, um, webinars that we've, we've attended, was that eighty percent of schools across the state of Massachusetts are classified in levels one or two. And so, it is a, a pretty high ratio for school districts to be in those two categories, one or two. So, how are schools classified? I'm going to push ahead into this one, because I wanted to actually consolidate these two slides, so you could get a visual with what I'm about to tell you, and I'll, I'll try to be quick. Um, like I said before, there are five levels now that the state reports out, um, data on. So, if you're a level-one school system, that means you're meeting proficiency and, and closing the, the gaps in terms of your student achievement. For the aggregate and the high need students, so the ESE engagement on the right is very low. If you're a level-two, that means you're not meeting proficiency and gap narrowing goals in the aggregate or high needs in a specific area, and I will talk to you a little bit more about that. The ESE engagement is, is relatively very low, again, for level-two, based on some of the information Carol and I have been looking at from the state. Um, if you're a level-three district, you are, your schools are performing in the lowest twenty percent of this, the state's, um, schools, and so, that would also include a number of your students falling in the lowest-performing subgroups. And so, the ESE engagement shifts into high gear, where they are working more, you're working more with the Department of Ed staff. Um, level-four, same situation, very high ESE engagement, engagement, um, and you have a subset of schools that are level-three that are continuously low-performing, and level-five chronically underperforming. There's only one district in the state right now that's currently at a level-five school system. So, this is how they've changed everything in terms of the way the state looks at data. You probably remember these graphs. Uh, we put this in here, but I didn't put it in your PowerPoint, um, because I just wanted to show you a little bit of, um, how we used to look at information, do you remember this one? We kind of, we went through that last year, we, we broke down CPI, and, um, but what we took this year was our two thousand and twelve data, and we put it into this old frame, so that you could, uh, get a visual here on, um, where our students are scoring, and I have copies for you, so I can give you hard copies of this as well. If you look on the left-hand side, what you'll see is that our proficient or higher scores are, are very consistently high and, um, much higher than the state's score, so we do very well, and we're very proud of that. Um, and so, if you, you know, you could go through and combine all the numbers, but if you look to the right-hand side, what you'll see way to the right, the first time, um, we've been able to really get some good numbers here, is to look at how many, um, students are included, um, in each grade level, it, testing in each range, and the student growth percentile that's associated with the growth that these students are achieving at each grade level, um, across these tests and over time.
And you're looking for a ra, a range of-
We're looking for a range of forty to sixty in terms of student growth percentile, we feel that that's, that's a really, um-
The old system didn't provide any accommodation for student growth, for the student growth.
So, this gives us another way of looking at data. Okay? So, this-
You can have students who fail MCAS but who make eighty-five percent growth, so you say, wow, you know, so you, you keep working with that student, but, you know, you can't really ask a whole lot more than that.
Right. So, what we used to have was the, what I had just shown you in that previous slide, and this is the way the new data reports are coming out from the Department of Ed. So, we received a district accounted, accountability, excuse me, data sheet, and what that did was, they took all of those numbers that you saw on the previous slide, and they translated it into this new, uh, reporting mechanism. So, you'll see some information here on all of our students, this is a district as a whole. So, we fell in seventy-four, do you remember when I said earlier that seventy-five is considered to be on target? So, as a district, we're looking at that number to figure out where is that one, where are we off in that one, where we're not consistently on target across the board, grades three through ten. And so, what we're trying to do is break down that data right now in each school and in each grade level to try to determine those things. But you will see other places where we did meet, um, our targets. And because of where we are, when I take a, I'm just going to show you really quickly how we break out our data by school, our Pembroke accountability data is broken into a similar frame, and you'll see all students met the targets. And so, when we look a little bit deeper into our high need subgroups or our high needs category, that new reporting category, you'll see that we fell in that sixty range, so we have to break that down a little deeper into some of the categories that fall below that, and take a look at our, our populations, and figure out exactly where we need to, um, target our interventions.
Julie, what's the difference between high needs and students with disabilities?
Students with disabilities is part of the high needs, is part of the high needs category, that all students in the high needs are the top two layers, and underneath high needs, all of those, all of those categories of students fall into that high needs.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
They're counted twice, but if you look at that, what you might think is that-
You aggregate, all student, high needs are included in all students, and then, students with disabilities are included in high needs. High needs, yes.
So, if you look at the high needs comes over, but look at the population of the subgroup of white, that, that helps you, but the special ed sub, subgroup is lower, so-
Yep.
So, so, so if we look at a target there, we, obviously, what, what's pretty obvious is that we need to take a look at-
Right.
You know, the special education programs and the services and-
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, this is our middle, high school data, so this data spans from grade six through ten, and you'll see, again, our high needs, um, I'm sorry, all students met the target, and our high need subgroups, and then, after you break down those, those different subsets or subgroups beneath that, you'll see where we met targets, uh, within the high needs range, but where we did not meet targets. And, and so, again, we'll be taking a look at disaggregating that data.
Remember, to be in level-one, you have to be seventy-five or better in both the aggregate, which obviously, we are here, and the high needs, which we're not.
Yep. Right. Okay. Does anyone have any questions before I move on? So, our high points, um, at the same time that this data, you know, the data comes out from the Department of Ed, and everybody is scrambling, we're trying to get into data warehouse, it's, it's just, you know, everybody's in. And, um, at the same time, other, uh, media venues are, are compiling this data as well, so you'll see some reports in the Boston Globe, and you'll see some reports on boston.com, and then, they'll start to go school by school. So, I pulled this out of boston.com, this is a school-by-school results sheet, and, uh, when we went through and we took a look at, um, the number of our students in terms of how they, they range, or how they are compared in scores, school by school, we found some really positive data, and so, we wanted to share that with you. And what we found, Carol and I went down and, and crunched some numbers, there are four areas where we rank in the top twenty-five percent of the state, which is fantastic. And, um, those four areas are tenth grade science, our eighth grade English, fifth grade math, and third grade math. And so, those four categories, we are just amazing, and-
What areas are you dwelling?
In the top twenty-five percent of the state.
Which were those? Is there a copy of that in the?
Sure.
Oh, sure.
Ten, uh, sorry, tenth grade science, eighth grade English, fifth grade math, and third grade math. Yes. And then, when we looked, um, again, at this data, what we just, what we found was that we were also in the top quarter, well, well, top third, I'm sorry, the top third of the state, for every other MCAS test that our students took at each grade level.
Except.
Yeah, except.
Except.
Except the three that-
Except the three, right.
What does really high points mean?
Well, that, that-
That's just a title oversight.
That's just my title of, of how other, how we are, how our data is being reported across the state. So, we look at our own data from our Department of Ed, the, um, the way that our Department of Ed gives us our data as a district, but when we look at our data across the state, and-
Compared to other schools?
Others, yes, other schools in the same grade range.
So, what we're doing is we're talking about-
Bruce, we can answer questions after this, okay?
Sure.
Right. Yeah, so, so the three areas we had were fifth grade science that we have to look at.
Yep.
Yes, sixth grade math and eighth grade math.
Uh, what about eighth grade science?
Uh, let's see, did I miss eighth grade science? Oh, sorry, eighth grade, oh, yeah, I got that start.
Eighth grade science, I see, eighth grade science-
Wait, eighth grade math is not, oh, yes, it is, yes.
Yep. Yep. Seventh grade math? Forty percent needs improvement, warning slash failing?
Well, we fell into the, we were comparing it into the, of, the percentage of the state, so-
Right, but I'm just more-
We were looking at that, that was thirty-three percent, and it's an area, there's no doubt, we're looking at the whole math program at the middle school.
We are.
Fifth grade science is difficult without any labs for the, for the kids, I mean, you know.
Yeah, fifth grade science is an entry point in, in, in the science MCAS world.
Right, it's a new test for the kids. Access to lab science curriculum, so, and that is tested for, um, the MCAS.
And this is, just so I'm clear, this, when you say sixth grade English, those were all the children that were in sixth grade last year, so it's this year's-
Seventh grade.
Seventh graders. This is our current seventh grade.
Say that again?
This year's seventh grade.
When you look at, like, sixth gr, sixth grade English?
Yeah.
They are this year's seventh graders.
Right, right.
I just wanted to make sure I had it in perspective.
Yes.
The other thing we found, um, was when we looked at our trends over time, um, and we were able to disaggregate the data, I mean, you'll see the charts, you know, all the charts that we show and, and all of those things, I mean, that's not, obviously, what we have here. Because it is a different reporting mechanism. But when we went through and we looked at the data, and we were able to compile our scores for our tenth grade ELA test, for example, ninety-five percent of our students, all students, scored in the proficient and advanced categories for the ELA MCAS test. And so, there are things like that, that you don't see until you disaggregate this data. And so, what we chose to do tonight was not to go through, I mean, as excited as we are about all of these things, we didn't go through and disaggregate every little point, because we wanted to show you how everything has changed in the, the reporting world, and just give you an overview of, of this data as it's coming out with this new, um, this new reporting tool. And then, really be able to break down for you and give you some information on, you know, where we're really seeing some gains and some strengths, and where we know we need to, to shore things up and, and reassess how we're addressing those things. And so, that brings me to my last slide, which is our next steps, how will we, how do we take all of this data and now make some recommendations for, for change, or, you know, um, or look at things and, and make some decisions in terms of, of how we will move forward when it comes to specific content areas? So, what we're doing right now in each school is just aggregating data and assessing our student scores for trends in ELA math and science. We're identifying our growth through the data trends, but we're also establishing school-based action plans, um, which is something that we have to do anyway as a school district, but we may have to go back and make some adjustments to our school and, our school improvement plans as a result of this data, because that is a requirement of being a level-two school district. But we'll also, we also want to do that, because we need to determine, uh, where our goals are going to be for this school year, it's early enough in the year, it's only the last week of September, so we should be able to make some, some significant decisions in terms of how we will, uh, raise our students' achievement and, and lower these proficiency gaps, um, in the different, in the different contents, and in the different, um, subgroups that we're identifying here. So, um, that is the plan for us in terms of, of what we will be doing in the next few weeks to really take a look at that, the, I'll look at that, Carol will look at that, our special ed director will look at that, our principals, our department heads, our teachers, and- ed director will look at that, our principals, our department heads, our teachers, and really start to, um, break down these numbers and figure out what that means for us moving forward.
Great, so when do we do our next MCAS? Is that where we-
Administer it or, or talk about our results?
No, go through our results.
Um, we have done that in, like, November-ish.
November, December, okay.
But let's talk about that.
All right, yeah.
Because, um, yeah, because we, we probably, because we're Level Two, we probably do need to do those adjustments to the, um, to the, the improvement plans if we're gonna do that a little sooner. Because, you know, they'll, they'll have to look at their current goals and make sure that the goals are consistent with the data, and some may need to change, be tweaked, be added, et cetera.
When will we get these from our own children?
They came in the mail today.
I was gonna say, they've been mailed out.
We, our, our MCAS data was released last week by the state, and we had to wait for those, um, the results to come. So you should be getting them in the next day or two if you haven't received them already.
They did today?
They did today?
Oh, good. So we mailed them on a Friday or, unless last week?
No, they're gone, they're all out now.
Oh, I know, they're, they got them, so we, but we did it last week?
No.
They did it yesterday.
Yeah, it's a yesterday.
Yesterday afternoon.
They came in the mail or they came with the backpack?
No, mail.
Mail today.
Oh, wow.
Or mine arrived today.
They left yesterday and got there today?
New West Coast service.
Oh, I'm pretty impressed, that's a good turnaround time.
Okay.
They'll mail them tomorrow when they get them.
All right, moving right, then I think, I think we're good.
Unless you have questions, and we will keep you posted.
Yeah, let's just make sure we have our next meeting scheduled so we can go through all the detailed information.
Sure.
How does, just, how does the, the one student that doesn't fall into trends and whatnot, how does that student get picked up if they're struggling?
You mean if a student doesn't fall into a subgroup?
Well, the principals, the principals look individual by individual.
I mean, MCAS is really, to me, um, a student by student thing. And I know the state reports it as a subgroup, you know, we have thirty more, thirty more kids in this particular place, but every, every student counts. And so it's, it's really taking a look at, you know, how is a student doing over time? And we can do that now, much more so with the student growth percentile and take a look at, you know, how the student is progressing than we ever could have before. So that's a great thing, it's a great, um, you know, transition with this data. But, um, it, it is definitely a personal thing.
I think I just needed to be reminded of that, 'cause I look at this and I look at this and I'm thinking.
I know, I know, and it all comes at you and you're trying to break it all down, and so that's...
There are some kind of individual student plans for students that fall into the needs improvement category, if I recall, and a little bit-
Student success plans?
Actually, time warning, they have student success plans.
Those plans, yeah.
For students in warning. Cause needs improvement is not failing.
Right, right.
Right, yeah.
But certainly, we still look at individual students.
But absolutely.
And we're able, we're able to disaggregate the data significantly so that you can, you can break it down and determine exactly where a student's individual strengths and weaknesses are based on questions and strands and, you know, right down to-
Parents can do that with the reports that we receive in the mail.
Correct.
I was gonna say, the parent report's amazing, you can tell exactly what they-
I mean, we, we take a, a really close look at not only this data, but I love to look at the, um, and I always tell, I always tell the principal this, I love to look at the item analysis, because when I look at the item analysis, I get a sense, I can read the question, I can think about, you know, what types of answers could have been used, and, and so you really get a better sense of the test when you can see the test and use an item analysis to break it down in addition to some of this overarching, um, information. That helps us with curriculum and alignment and, you know, maybe gaps that we have or, or places where we make sure that we wanna include more, um, writing, for instance, or things like that. And so it's a great tool for us to use as well.
This, um, Julie, the classifying schools, so we're currently Level Two.
Yes.
But to be a Level One school doesn't mean that all of your students are scoring high. It just means that they're improvement, they're improving at a certain level, is that right?
Yes, because the, because the number you get is a combination of the way they performed, but also the student growth factor. So they, this is the first time they actually give credit for growth.
They're giving you credit for, that's bad, that's just, that's like-
I know. It's nice to see after ten years, I think, this type of shift.
That's what's gonna change, like, yeah. Somebody heard, somebody say something, we can't, like, make all the kids get advanced.
Well, I think that's the purpose of the waiver, because more, what Massachusetts was finding is, based on the trajectory of where they were, even though we had, we were, our CPI was like nine, ninety-two, but it wasn't, it wasn't significant enough growth, we didn't hit the growth target, so we got put into a needs improvement status. And you say, what, ninety-two percent, you know, or ninety-two score? How are we needs improvement? But because of the way it was structured, so that's why they said, we don't think this is, this is really representing what we really wanna say. So, so now what they're saying is, if you're starting here over a six-year period, you have to, you have to, you have to increase that by half. Not to a hundred, but you have to, so we actually have information that we didn't share with you that literally tells us what those targets are in each of those subgroups, so we know what we're trying to hit.
That's awesome.
So I think it actually is more, is a more fair system, to be honest with you.
More helpful, I would think, too.
Yeah.
For those schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for explaining that, all those changes and new, newness to the process. That's helpful.
Yes, yes, you can call us.
I can get most of it, I understand most of it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll help you, Bruce.
Yeah, I just saw them, they don't make me stupid, you're saying.
No, we'll, we'll help you.
Good, thanks. I don't want you guys like that.
Any questions, um, about the superintendent's information for the committee?
The time will be in.
You call Bruce, I'll help you.
Um, just one thing on the enrollment, Carol?
Yes.
Um, high school enrollment's been going down since oh-nine. Went from four fifty-five down to four oh-eight this year.
Yes.
No, I'm just, no, and so we're down to fifteen sixty-three overall in the district.
Right, remember, we did cut a K and it cut a one class a couple of years ago, so the enrollment was lower at those levels. We knew that trend was happening.
Okay.
At the high school, I think the, I mean, I think this year there were, um, a number of kids who left between the eighth and ninth grade, so that accounts for some of it. Do you have any other?
Usually we average seven, eight percent. They've had about seventeen percent this year.
Okay, so that would be, that would be somewhat of a factor. Can you think of anything else? Peter, I mean, the other thing is, we, the choice, the choice, we've been decreasing the number of choice students every year by a pretty significant number.
That's about ten kids a year.
Okay.
So, so we've, we've done that for three years now.
At least three years.
So that's at least thirty kids.
Okay, so I'm just wondering how that's gonna factor into the whole overcrowding issue with NEAS? I wonder if that is gonna help us out?
Oh, I would think it would help us out.
It'll be, just be interesting.
Yeah.
Well, NEAS never said anything about, uh, class sizes, they, they talked about loading teachers.
Oh, okay, so it was more of a, a real space issue than class size?
It was space, yeah, not, yeah.
They weren't, they weren't happy with some of the high numbers of kids in the thirties either.
In the science classes.
Yeah.
But we, we, uh, rectified that in two thousand and seven.
Okay, all right. All right, moving right along to line item transfers. And this is encumbering. Is this encumbering all the?
Everything, every, all the salaries.
All the salaries, okay.
Encumbered, and so, a lot of this probably would have been done if, I think you typically recast your budget, and it wasn't done.
Okay.
So I literally had to move every salary line around to try to get it balanced, because it was money and salary adjustments and the raises and all that, so this was, trying to get all this, this is only salaries, I'll, I'll come back next time with some operations.
With operational, okay. So does everyone understand what that, what that all means? Okay. So, shall I entertain a motion to approve line item transfers one through eighty-two as presented?
A second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, audit report findings for the end of the year. Any questions on that?
Be sorry.
That's okay.
Just, I can give a little background. This is an audit, it's not necessarily a financial audit, it's an audit of our end-of-the-year report to the Department of Education. So we are required, um, every, uh, September to file, um, all our financial statements and where we spent our money into a, into a, a form developed by the Department of Education. It used to be like thirty-two schedules, and now it's maybe five. And they use that to look at a, a lot of different things, but they also use it to see your, uh, net school spending numbers, so it pulls in numbers from the town, uh, indirect cost numbers. So most of the findings on this, and I think if you had the chance to read the minutes from the budget and finance meeting, Bobby took great notes about what we talked about that day about these findings. Most of them are correctable very easily. If you look, all we, you know, something was reported on the wrong line, belonged, you know, belonged here, didn't belong there, whatever, most of them. Uh, there was a finding that we don't have a signed agreement with the town, which is something I'm working on. They, I think that the, uh, Department of Education agrees with the methodology we use to report it, but by law, you're supposed to have a signed agreement between the, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee.
And this has been an issue for a couple, for several years now?
Since, since, since it went into effect.
Right.
And, but you're not alone.
Right.
There's many, many districts that are, you know, the, the, the Department of Education says, you're doing it right, but the law says you're supposed to have a signed agreement. So I have some samples and that's on my agenda to try to get that resolved.
It's interesting, though, how they don't enforce it.
Right, they don't do anything to you, right.
They just report it on there, yeah.
Right.
And hope that you'll get to the seniors, right? Well, we're there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
So, but, but as I said, so I've been, I'm in the process of doing the end-of-the-year report for fiscal year twelve, so I have taken the last couple of years' audit reports, and as I'm reporting, I'm making sure that I'm, you know, trying to make sure I don't make the same mistakes. Because, I mean, I've worked in a couple of different districts, there's a lot of revolving accounts here, and the fee account, fee donation, fee-based and donations and stuff that I'm not so familiar with, so, but there wasn't any findings in the audit, so I'm following just what Jim did last year for those reports. So hopefully, we'll come back with, you know, a couple of findings. And typically, what you do, and what didn't happen this year is, they do a draft audit in, uh, February, March, and they say that you need to, you know, that's incorrectly reported. So the Department of Education allows you up until June to make amendments to your end-of-the-year report and fix all those errors. That didn't happen this year, because in the transition, the last date to file the, uh, amendments was June thirtieth, I didn't start till July, so those, Jim did some-
Jim left around the fourteenth, so.
Yeah, Jim did some amendments. I found some amendments in his book, he did, but he didn't do them all. So, uh, typically, you'll have findings, you amend it, finding's gone, so hopefully, next spring when we get this, we won't have pages of findings.
There was really nothing in here, you know, as I talked to Joan.
No, there was nothing, it was the usual.
Yeah, it was nothing in there where it was like, oh, my goodness, we really, they're tweaks, and, and we are already adjusting for those.
Any questions on the monthly financial report? I just had a couple.
Sure.
Um, the deficit spending that we have, like, there's a few-
Where?
Um, I was just flipping through and I found a couple, let's see, pupil transportation.
Oh, I should explain that. I asked Carol if it was all right with her, and I believe she maybe talked to some of you, or, I'm not sure. There's no reason to have the, the, um, special ed tuition outlines and the special ed transportation costs broken out in the schools. It's really, it's a district, it's a district line. I have other ways of breaking it out from my end-of-the-year report, but that's really the only time you would need the information. But if the committee wanted to know, gee, how many kids at the high school are out, tuition down, how many kids in the, whatever, we have that information in a different format they're gonna give you?
But you, see, this is the deficit spending, then it's just a reflection of-
Right, we, so next month, next time when I come back, you'll see, I'm gonna ask for transfers to put money, all the monies from the schools in those, those sped lines, sped tuition out and sped transportation into the district line. And in my opinion, it's much clearer to see what you're really spending in special ed if you're looking at one number.
I agree.
Than broken up into all the different schools.
Because we can get all that.
And can you educate me, and where in that report did you see deficit spending?
Anything with a negative sign.
Anything with a negative, is how?
Yeah, first page.
Second page, got it.
Right, you had said that you weren't gonna break it, you were gonna just have one.
Right, so, so there's a lot of deficit spending in the salaries, because I haven't made the transfers yet.
Right, gotcha.
But the operations is, is some of that, um...
Yeah, so I look at special ed transportation.
Right.
And we're not over in that, it's just the way, we haven't done the tran, we, we haven't overspent that line.
No, that, we asked Margaret, um, the sped secretary, to start encumbering to the new line that we created.
Right, okay.
So we need to go and we need to, um, move the budgets, and then we'll need to go and make, unencumber, those POs that were encumbered to the wrong line, and then reencumber-
Reencumber to the correct line.
Right.
It's a little transition process.
So I was gonna say, if you look at, probably if you just look at Pearly, let me just find it. Oh, Pearly's not a good one, 'cause it's, I don't know what's going on with Pearly, 'cause it's way over, but let's look at another line.
What page are you on?
So if you go to page sixteen, right at the bottom of the page, Pembroke, Special Ed Transportation, well, we have the total budget available, the bottom of page sixteen. Thirty-three, seven ninety-one is available. Well, that's not true.
And the special ed tuition to private schools is also a hundred percent available, but that's not accurate.
Right.
Right, so that's, so, okay, perfect.
The next time when I come back, I'll have transfers in to fix all those lines, so that, at the end of the day, hopefully, there won't be any negatives.
Right, okay, but I just wanted to make sure that's what was going on.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Anymore?
Joan's aware of our policy.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah.
She'd like us to be willing to discuss that, you know, at some other point, too, making some modifications for some lines, but right now, we're working within, we're working with the policy.
Okay, um, all right, subcommittee reports, budget and finance.
We met on Monday.
We did.
Before the Selectmen's, uh, meeting that you attended.
Oh, right, yep. Oh, right, yep.
Just to discuss the, um, the money that we were asking, we put on the warrant.
Okay.
And that was pretty much the entire meeting.
Was long.
And you did a good job at the town meeting. I thought it went really well. I don't think there was any major concerns and questions.
And I did follow up with David Surfus the following day because we didn't stay for the, the full discussion for the vote. And he said that it was a unanimous, you know, unanimous vote to put it on the warrant. It was interesting though, they said that they didn't need a dollar figure.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
Like you said, but they're like, oh, that's okay, we can, and I'm like, well, we, we worked so hard to get that dollar figure. They were willing to use it as a placeholder. Yeah, which was great.
No, which was nice that they were willing to do that.
Yep.
Okay, governance.
Governance.
Oh, we have a new policy to read.
But this is distribution.
Distribution says no, okay.
But you know what occurs to me? That I should probably include in your next packet the actual, uh, letter from ethics.
Okay, yeah, why don't we do that?
So you have the context of that.
Okay. All right, negotiating.
Nothing to report.
Nothing going on with that. Public relations. Pam, Rob?
But we probably need.
We have not had a meeting since the last school committee meeting.
Okay.
So we do have one scheduled for October fifth.
All right.
Nine o'clock.
All right, uh, new business, um, we just have the new policy distribution. So we do a, when you do a new policy, unlike a revision to an existing policy, you do a distribution, then you do a first read, second read, and acceptance?
Usually the second read you adopt.
Second read, we adopt.
Okay, did you want to talk about the safety committee or?
Yes, it was not listed. Pam.
Yeah, we had a safety committee meeting with the, the police department and the fire department and the school principals and the bus company.
Yeah.
And it was a very good, good conversation and we established the goal of, of, you know, excellent communication between all the departments and that we would be having a monthly meeting going forward to see how everything's going.
Good, like we've had before. Like usually it's a monthly meeting, right?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
But you changed it, it said to the second? I had to do the second, yeah. Tuesday or Thursday? Thursday. Second Thursday. Right. That's always a great meeting because it's always the same time and it's always an hour. That's right, I keep it to an hour.
Right, everybody needs to, you know, they have their hours set and.
Yeah, I agree. All works well.
Any problems with the start of school or any issues around safety in the buildings or things like that?
No, no, you know, we discussed some of the, the new buses. They have cameras with audios in them, which is going to be really helpful in case there's any kind of incident in which one person says one thing and another person says another thing and, um, and the bus drivers will be telling the students, they do tell the students that, you know, these cameras and audios are on so that everybody's aware of that.
Excellent.
The other, other, since we just did one other.
Building committee? Yeah, I had written that down, building committee.
Um, we, we met again and basically we're resolving these, this fact sheet, um, which is to, I believe they were trying to get it into the paper to submit it.
For today.
For today. So literally, um, I think there are fourteen facts that are on this list that the committee's gone through and debated and worked out and everybody's in agreement and should be in the paper. And that's what that meeting was.
Couple of things while we're on that topic. So there was an emergency conference call today that I had to get on at three o'clock with the MSBA because remember we've been waiting for word as to whether or not they're going to agree to partner with us on the middle high school renovation project, including the feasibility study. And while we're waiting for the, the actual document to confirm that, they are going to be partnering, they're tying the two projects together and they are working with us for reimbursement.
Well, that's great.
So.
Same reimbursement rate.
I, I, that, I'm not sure they're working that out, but I think so. So that was actually very good news. I think we were all very happy to hear that. But now, of course, the devil's always in the details. The other important date to, to know about, uh, with the school building committee is that on October third is the MSBA board meeting where they will vote on whether or not they're going to approve our preferred option for Pembroke. And they're also, that is where the staff is going to recommend to the board that the other project be tied to it, so.
So when you say tied to it, what does that mean?
Well, I'm still waiting to learn more information on that, but what it means is that they, they are expecting, um, like for example, that for the town to put on the warrant of feasibility study for the middle high school and to fund it.
You can't have one without the other.
That, that would be, that would be necessary, as I understand it.
So the way this, so in the fall, we would have a warrant or at special town, at the fall town meeting.
Twenty-ninth.
We're going to have a warrant article that says, will the town appropriate X dollars to?
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
To do the feasibility study.
To, to do the feasibility study for the middle high.
Next warrant is going to be, or article is going to be, will the town appropriate X million dollars to build the new Pembroke school?
To, yep.
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay, so those are two separate articles.
One.
That's right.
One pass.
Passover.
One passes, the second one doesn't.
Right, does it still go through? It's a problem if the second one does not pass, based on what I heard today.
They're tied together.
Okay, so they both have to pass to make it.
But the, but the good.
And if the polls, they both have to pass.
Uh, I don't think the, the article about the feasibility study even goes to the polls. It's just that, it's just the, the, that exclusion, I believe, that goes to the polls.
That is correct.
Okay.
So I think it makes it a little bit more palatable perhaps to the town to look at that if it's going to be supported fifty percent around by the MSBA. Because I know that's a question on many people's minds.
And the feasibility study and the project would be?
No, just, 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 all that's going to be on is the, to do the feasibility study.
But would the, would the next step be if the feasibility comes out with whatever renovation we need to, or any improvements we need to make, would they be willing to share at that point?
That's right.
They would.
That's what they're, that's what I believe they said today.
Okay.
Is that you would do the feasibility study, if you got funding, you would do the feasibility study in the winter and the spring, basically.
Okay.
Come back to the spring town meeting, perhaps.
Yeah, timing I'm not worried about, I was just more worried about if they, what they, what they would share.
But they would, but they would, but my understanding is they're, they're sharing in the process.
Okay.
And I did have to pop off for a couple of minutes to deal with another situation, but I, when I popped back on, that's what I heard.
Okay.
So I'm just giving the committee the news that, you know, there is definitely, that I can tell you without any doubt that the, the condition of passing the feasibility study at town meeting is a condition.
That's it.
And what they said was that they, they will agree that they're coming in on that project with us as partners.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's, and then the third date, second, second date, October twentieth, there's going to be a, it's a Saturday. There's going to be a community meeting, a question and answer, open discussion. I think their plan is to hopefully invite all the boards in town that would be interested in this, but also open it up to the public. So if you have nothing that you're doing on Saturday, October twentieth at ten o'clock, at, I think that one is at the middle high school.
Do we, did they know that there's also a PSAT test being administered?
They probably don't know that.
They didn't.
They probably don't know that.
I bet they don't.
Well, maybe people who drop their children off can come to the question and answer, I don't know.
Where do they take the exam?
I don't know, I, my son will be taking it for the first time.
They just, um, they take it in the school, in the classrooms.
In the classroom.
Typically, they do.
Okay, great.
Be in the English wing.
And the English wing, there we go.
Thank you.
So, so anyway, and I think there's a, also a community meeting, I, I, I think it's the fifteenth, I'm not positive, but I think it's the fifteenth, I'll get you, I'll clarify that, send you an email on that, where they're going to do, um, another one in the, in the evening. This one is a Saturday, thinking they may get a different audience.
It should have the soccer field.
Yeah, on Saturday, all right, well, there you go. Okay, thank you.
All right, um, so let's see, we, distribution of the new policy for relations with nonprofit entities, we'll go through, you have a copy, Carol's going to give us more information at the next meeting.
That's right.
And we'll have this first reading of it. Next up is the acceptance of an athletic donation, which was made by Mr., what is it? It's not anonymous.
It's Harry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it wasn't anonymous. Um, which was made by Mr. and Mrs. Harry Takkas, um, in honor of Patrick Thompson, and it's made to the athletic department?
That's right.
So the chair wants to entertain a motion to accept the one hundred dollar donation from Mr. and Mrs. Takkas with gratitude as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And once again, we are supremely grateful for all that, all the donations that everyone makes to us.
Very helpful.
And especially something like this, it does go a long way. There was information given to you by the superintendent and we, at this time, are not going to be discussing it. We may discuss it at the next meeting, so please hold on to it. Um, and we don't need to go into executive session this evening.
Are we going to go back to Cole since we didn't?
Oh, yes, Cole. Oh, sorry, we missed you at the beginning. Do you have anything to talk about at the, Cole is our, for those watching at home, is our student representative.
Sounds like.
Um, he's lost his voice a little bit, but you're a senior this year? Okay, and he's going to update us, um, at all of our meetings on what's going on at the middle high school and guide us along when we're struggling and spinning away.
All right. Excuse me, I do have a really bad cold, but, um, basically we're just getting, gearing up for the new year right now. Um, we just, today we just had freshman elections for officers and student council members, which is very important. It's good to get that in early so that, you know, the students have a say and they're not waiting. Because I know when I was a freshman, I didn't get in until after pep rally, which is, kind of stinks because as a student council member, that's like one of the biggest parts. Um, also, sports are going, I know the whole triple E thing has really affected everyone, but the good thing is, is no one's really complaining. And they're just.
That's what Mr. DeFranco was saying, so it's nice to hear you say the same thing.
Well, it's, it's true because, I mean, it's a very bad situation, but as long as we can practice, as we have a way of, you know, getting around that, working around that, then I think everyone's happy. I mean, it's not the best situation, but, um, I mean, no one's like willing to quit because of it, which is good. And, um, other than that, I think everyone's just, you know, like I said, getting ready for the new year and things to come, so.
Great. Well, thanks for being here. Welcome.
And I'm sorry I was late. I thought the meeting was at the high school, I was just misinformed about it.
That's all right. We're here.
Good thing you found us.
Yeah. And feel free to interject at any time during the meetings or, you know, shoot us an email about, you know, the meeting or something you want to talk about, you know.
And I just had a question, if student council had any fundraisers they wanted to create, did they have to run it by the school committee or did they have to run it through the school and then the school committee?
You should run it through Mr. Lucia first and then through the committee if you're soliciting students for funds on school grounds.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, the chair wants to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.